Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, March 8th. It's about 7:32, 7:33 PM. Tonight is the, this is the Plains under Commission. Tonight we have a public hearing and a general meeting on the docket. This means being held via go-to meeting for maybe one or two more times. Jeremy, myself, and Fred Donat are here in Town Hall in room 213. So, to get right into it, the first item on the agenda is the the continuation of public hearing regarding proposed amendments to the Zarian zoning map, COZM, number 3-2021, business site plan application number 244A's in Apple, special permit application number 262A's in Apple, Guidepost LLC at 76 Tokenique Road. I want to read this whole thing one more time. The proposal is to rezone 76 Tokenique Road property from Design Commercial DC to Design Office DO. Proposed to establish a monastery-based school to be licensed as a childcare center in the former, in a building formerly occupied by Trial Rent. Reconfigure the parking and internal traffic circulation. Propose new fence playground areas and perform related site enrollment activities. The 0.44 plus minus acre subject property is located on the north side of Tokenique Road, approximately 675 feet of its intersection with Old Kings Highway South. It is shown on assessment about number 38 as lot number two in the Design Commercial DC Zone. Jeremy, Fred, what do we got?
This is the 30 evening of public hearings on this item. And what you've received in your packets is a March 20, March 1, 2022, second tier parking review from Michael Galante, Hanover, and Greg Del Rio. Hanover is here tonight with the commission. And a response to that is a March 4 memo from Higher Ground Education. First page is a description and the second page is Exhibit A. Those are the two newest items since the last meeting. And that's all we have. It's new information.
Okay, so we want to have Bob Madison introduce it.
Mr. Madison's here on behalf of Montessori School.
And then can we have Greg Del Rio introduce the letter and the findings? Bob, that's where we are tonight, right?
That's where we are, yes.
Fantastic. Anything, we're gonna, we're gonna ask Mr. Del Rio to go over the Hanover letter. I'd like to give you the opportunity to speak and tell me any thoughts that you had at this point and anything that we're missing.
Okay, can I just mention for the record, Robert Maslin representing the applicant and with me are Alma Reza and Matt Knopf, whose names appear on somewhere on this screen here. They're both from Guidepost.
Yep, yeah, Matt's been here before. I don't know if Alma, it's her first time or not.
I don't think she's been here.
Yeah, Matt's been here many times. Okay, Mr. Del Rio, welcome. You look a little bit different than Mike Galante, but you're still welcome. We have, we have in our office, in our possessions, the March 1, 2022 letter from your office. Can you just take it, take us through it to make sure we're all on the same page relative to the thoughts and conclusions and and speed bumps, for lack of a better word, we could jump into on this one?
Um, surely. So with regards to our concern for the original application and operations, it was, it was going to be basically self-parking and then the parent would get out of the car with the child, bring the child inside, check them in, and then return to their vehicle and leave. Which, you know, that whole process took an average of, you know, quite a bit of time, what we'll call dwell time for the time that the vehicle is actually in the, in the parking space. And so, looking at the numbers and looking at the available parking as well as the layout of the parking lot, which is limited in its ability to, you know, store vehicles that would not, you know, pretty quickly potentially queue up into the street and have limited storage space and queuing space if all the parking was, was taken. And then also start to have a limited ability to make U-turns because you would have to do a broken U-turn, basically. You couldn't do a smooth, one movement U-turn with the, with the space that's allocated. So, all of this started to say, you know, this is getting a little tight, a little bit, you know, iffy if things are gonna operate. So, we asked them to take another look and the applicant came back with actually something that they've implemented before in other locations. They provided video and pictures of what that operation is like. We reviewed that. And then they came back with their, with the current letter. And if you'd like, I can, I can continue and explain the, what they call the valet service. So the valet service is not, and this is to mitigate the potential for when congestion could occur, right? So, the, the plan is to, to operate normally without the valet service, but if, if congestion does start to occur, the fallback is to implement the valet service. Now, valet is not parking the car. The valet actually means that there is staff available to come to the car so that the, the parent, the driver of the vehicle does not have to get out of the car and bring their, their child into the building. They can do the check-in at the vehicle and then the staff member will take them out of the car and bring them inside, which, which greatly reduces the dwell time and therefore makes increased availability for, for parking space to be available for the, for the next arriving parent and child. So that's sort of the, the overflow. And then looking at it, we agree that it seems like a reasonable approach and, and should address the concerns of any peak activity that, that could occur. You know, during the, particularly in the morning when the drop-offs and the check-ins are, are occurring.
A couple of questions. Relative to the valet, is it, is it your understanding, is it my understanding of listening to you that they're, they're fine? They're fine at the current point without the valet, but if it's aimed at future, be it staff or be it Town Hall staff and P&amp;Z being Jeremy and his team or the police department, then we would go to the valet or do you want the valet immediately? And also the other piece of that question is, this school, and I think my numbers are correct, is supposed to start out at 56 children? 58 children and then graduate up to, I think it's, I thought it was 56 to 78, but I don't know if I noted correctly.
Right, that's correct. That, that's correct. So, right, so there's, there's less of a concern obviously at the 56. And that will also give them some time to adjust and learn and, and, you know, know what to expect as enrollment increases. So I, I think it gives them a chance. So, we're not so concerned at the 56, but we are a little concerned at the, at the 78. I don't think it's, I think it's something that just needs to be monitored and as, if, if congestion does occur, they, they don't need to necessarily implement the, they should be ready to implement the valet on day one in case there is, you know, any kinds of issues, but they don't necessarily need to implement it on day one unless congestion is, is an issue. But we're not anticipating that until enrollment increases.
Okay, then at the last piece of your, your application, it says, we request the applicant provide a detailed graphic description and graphic illustration for the concept for the commission. Did we get that yet? Do we need that?
Yeah, that's included in the March 4th response memo.
Okay, great, got it. Okay. Commissioners, Jeremy, you want to add before we go to commissioners? Okay. Any questions relative to this piece of the application that we're trying to finalize? George, Cara, go ahead. Cara, turn your light on. Turn your microphone on.
I guess I understand the enrollment progression. I, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable that there's no red line, black line, whatever you want to call it, with respect to when this valet service will be triggered, right? It's congestion when and if needed, but who makes that determination? Traffic authority? I mean, I think we already know that there's an enforcement. We don't, we have, we have limited resources with respect to enforcement in the land use department in Town Hall. So, and, and what if they disagree with us? So who, what are, are there finite parameters around when this will be triggered so that there isn't an issue or a problem down the road? I think it's better to have things clear and make sure that there's clear understanding and expectations, both for the applicant's benefit, for the public's benefit, for the benefit of students and the parents, and for staff, that there's a clear understanding when it will be expected that this valet service will be instituted. And that's sort of my concern. And I think there needs to be clear parameters around it.
All right, I want to let Jeremy comment on that because he and I spoke about that today. But we can, as a commission, we can figure that out during deliberations and tell the applicant or, or decision at that time. Do you want to add that? Well, first.
Steve, can I just respond to that briefly? This is a self-imposed process. The memorandum is really the procedure that's going to be implemented. It'll be self-imposed if and when congestion, it becomes an issue. And for the safety of the, of the children, the school itself is probably more concerned with people safely dropping off their children than anybody else because that's who they are and that's how they operate. And I think one of the, if I could just touch on one other point, one of the items that, or one of the points of confusion might have been in the original video that we showed a meeting or two ago where there was a valet in, in, in the video, but it was curbside. And I think there might have been an impression that the valet was going to be out in Tokenique Road or it was not going to be in parking spaces.
This will be car side, correct?
Clarify that with Michael Attis.
But this will be car side.
Sorry?
Isn't this anticipated to be car side?
This is in parking spaces. You pull into the.
Like in the parking spot.
In the parking spot, yes. If the child is taken from the car to the school and the, and the parent backs up and leaves.
What are the ages of the children who are anticipated to be at the school?
Very young through, I believe, age five.
Well, let's, where's Matt's here? Matt's in the room. Matt, let's see.
He's the school, so.
Bob just said, so what are the ages?
The ages are from infant up to six years old, like Bob said.
Okay, so, so they're not kids who can enter, exit a car and walk? They may be in a car seat, like what we refer to as a bucket, right? So there'll be a staffer who will have to, will they take the car seat out of the car and carry the car seat in? Or will they remove the child from the car seat and carry the child in their arms without the car seat?
Video showed a staff person carrying a child.
Again, we know the video is not precisely what will happen at this location, so I want the applicant to explain how the process will work.
Let Matt add to that.
It, it's, it's the same, it's the same process. The difference here is that there's not like a pick-up and drop-off lane. We're utilizing, what we're proposing is utilizing the parking spaces. So the parent will pull the car into the parking space, park the car. A staff member will assist the child out of the car, whether that's, you know, physically taking the child and carrying them or taking the, like you said, the car seat out. Or if it's an older child that can walk, right, they'll hold their hand and they'll walk the child into the, they check them in and then they walk the child into the school.
I thought they did check-in at the car.
Yeah, the check-in happens at, at the car. They use, I don't know if it's exactly an iPad, but it's an iPad-type device that checks the child in at, at the car.
And so we're not, so we're comfortable that, right, that there'll be room with, you know, right? Because they'll be opening a rear side car door and there potentially, right, will be cars on either side, that there will be adequate space and room for the door to be open, for the staffer to be able to then open, you know, because right on a curbside, there's ample room to open the door fully because there's no vehicle on the other side. Doing it within a parking space, there potentially may be issues fully opening the doors.
Yeah, I mean, there's the, if, at the site plan, there's the one space that's right up against the parking lot island. This current site plan doesn't show a sidewalk there, but we're planning, we can include a sidewalk there, you know, which would assist that. If we need additional spaces beyond one parking space, you know, again, it's something that operationally they'll figure out, but I, I would think that, you know, maybe three spaces are dedicated to the pick-up and drop-off cycle and one of the spaces is used at, you know, we can cone it off. And one of the spaces is then used, you know, for the, kind of the, the removal process, if you will, if that makes sense.
Not really, but I think, I think during deliberations, we'll have to, you know, work this out.
One, one other point, though, whether it's a staff person or the driver of the car, someone has to get out, open a different door and bring the child out. Whether they reach in and pick up the child and carry the child or escort the child holding their hand or, or some other way into the building. So either way, whether it's staff or the driver.
This was about reducing dwell time, right? And it seems like not being curbside. I think there needs to be some details worked out to ensure that it will, in fact, reduce dwell time because if it doesn't, then the queuing issue and the U-turn issue and all the issues that the traffic expert raised really aren't being addressed.
The dwell time should be a minute to a minute and a half. Something in that range. The dwell time was timed on the video at 40 seconds at curbside, so.
Curbside, right.
Pulling, but pulling into a parking space might add a few seconds to that, but it's not going to be five or 10 minutes.
Unless there's, I didn't say five or 10 minutes, but I think there are some details that still probably need to be worked out during deliberations.
The other, the other thing that's in the procedure is if it becomes necessary, the staff parks off-site.
Do we know where?
Municipal parking where there's two hours or three-hour parking, the Center Street lot.
And, and, okay, so, but that. Okay.
With regards to the parking spaces, typical spaces are eight, eight and a half feet. And the parking spaces here are striped for nine feet, so they are, they will have a little more room than the average parking spot.
Thank you, Greg. That's very helpful.
What's, what's our, what's our rate? Are we nine feet?
Nine.
Yeah, we're nine. Thanks, Greg. Okay, and I, I think, I mean, I, I had a lot of kids way back when and my kids were in what you call buckets, which is what Cara said. And I think one of the, as Cara was asking was, isn't that we're gonna take the entire bucket versus, what do you call it, the car seat? The car seat doesn't move, but I would, I believe the staffer is gonna take the bucket or the parents can take the bucket into the, into the school. Is that a good answer, Matt? My kid, if my kid's six months, my kid's still in a bucket, right?
To be honest, to be honest, I, I don't know, but I would assume that staff would, yes, either take the entire bucket or they would take the child out of the car and, and, you know, carry them physically into the, the space, into the school, sorry.
And Amy just, can, is it Amy? Can Alma confirm that? Is Alma here?
Alma's here. Her microphone's on, but not.
Hi, good evening. Is, can, can everyone hear me?
Yep. Sure can.
Okay, I'm trying to apologize, work through technology.
Oh, there you are.
Hello. So I just turned my view, so just as, as a quick introduction, so I'm Alma Reza, I'm Vice President of Development, Higher Ground Education. We certainly appreciate the time that, that everyone has taken here to hear our case. I do want to make sure that I ask, excuse me, that I address your specific question, but in order to do that, I want to make sure that we restate the question and make sure that we address all of your concerns, so. Can we?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna state it again in my terms because I think Cara and I have the same question. At your school for an infant, is it the parent's bucket that's in the school with the kid?
So, so typically, I believe it's that we have the staff take the child from the car. I want, I want to make sure that I'm understanding what you're saying.
It, does the bucket go with the kid or is the kid staying in the bucket?
Wait, maybe if, if I can describe, Alma, when you have like a four-month-old, they sit in like a car seat thing that detaches from a base in your car and then you bring that whole thing into daycare and then they take the kid out inside. This way you can put the kid in it, inside the building, and then just drag it to the car and clip it in. I guarantee you, your school will be doing that. You're not gonna be taking a three-month-old out of a bucket seat in a car outside and walking in. There's, I've never seen that anywhere ever out here.
Me neither.
Okay, so, so I think what I would, what I would suggest again, and it does vary from one location to the next, but we would certainly be open to considering either option, as long as it's a solution that works.
Okay, so we're trying, your attorney just stated that it was a self-imposed procedure and it was your procedure as the applicant. So we're asking for clarity on your procedures and we're not getting sort of clarity. And, and, and we're being told that it's your procedures and self-imposed, which kind of is a signal that you don't want us to tell you what to do. So we're asking for clarity on what your procedures are.
Okay, and, and I do apologize to, to be transparent with you, but I don't have that specific detail that, that you're asking me for.
Okay.
Is the, is the question just narrowly whether you, the staff will take an infant from the car seat itself or the bucket, as we call it, I used to call it a picnic basket.
Yeah, same thing.
Basket in. And either way, it, the system works either way.
Well, Bob, I'm trying to understand what the procedure will be because the procedure is to reduce dwell time to address the traffic experts' concerns. We're not getting, we're told it's not like the video. We saw the video and the video did have time and, and showed the time reduction, right, that the valet service would provide. But this procedure is not going to be the one we saw on the video. So I think we're just simply trying to understand what the procedure will be to ensure it will reach dwell time to address the concerns of the traffic experts. That's it.
When it was my turn 30 years ago.
We don't care about 30 years ago, Bob. It's, it's. It's kind of easy. It's not hard. It's. If you're unbuckling the kid, it takes a minute to unbuckle the kid. If you unbuckle, if you're taking the whole bucket in, it takes about 15 seconds. It's not a hard question.
Right, but what I'm saying is, when it was my turn, we would take the bucket with my daughter and leave the bucket.
Leave the bucket at school. Yes, that's what I asked. And I get an answer. That doesn't know, and Alma doesn't know, and you don't know. It's not a hard question. I mean, it's Cara's question. It's a great question. Because it's got to do with dwell time. If you're unbuckling the kid, then you can put the kid in the shoulder and the kid's sleeping. You're not gonna wake the kid up. It's, it's, I would have thought you would say, yes, we take the whole bucket and we would move on. You didn't say that.
I mean, that's why Matt and Alma are here.
And I'll ask Matt and Alma again, do you know the answer to the question?
And, and I apologize, but that, that's what I said. I may have been having problems with my mic. Can you guys hear me now?
I can hear you perfectly.
Okay, yeah, I had a, it seemed like it cut out and I couldn't hear what you guys were saying, but it's back now. Yes, I, what I said was, if, if that's the, if that's the concern, I mean, that's, that's it. We'll, we'll take the bucket out of the car, that's the preference, and, and bring it in, into the facility. And I, I think that's the logical method, like Adam was describing, you know, and so.
Okay, all right. Got it. All right, so bottom line is, you're taking the bucket into the school. And that's, it's not self-imposed. It's, it's P&amp;Z imposed, but we usually don't get that granular with it, but I guess in this case we have to. About that. Did we ask you a question, you think, Cara?
I just want to make sure that the concerns about dwell time, the inability to queue, the inability to do, right? U-turns have been addressed so that both the traffic experts and the traffic authorities' concerns about queuing going onto Tokenique Road and the safety and traffic issues that may result from those, from, you know, that phenomenon will be addressed. And then I think, let's, and I think it was just about queue, about dwell time and making sure that there is an adequate procedure in place to address that issue. And I think, I think we have, I think it should be fine. And so that was my only real question.
Great, thanks. Okay. George Riley, any questions? Adam, any questions? George, you're good. Adam, you're good. And where's Jeff Paul?
Question.
Oh, go ahead, Adam. I'm sorry. I thought you were waving hi.
Sorry. How many teachers are expected in, to be in the school in the morning if the valet system is not implemented? Is it four or is it six?
There's eight staff members for this and one head of school, so nine total staff.
They're gonna be there all morning. Thing where four of them show up at night, you know, a little bit later and stay later and some of them, you know, come early and leave early kind of thing.
We do have shift change around noon. But yeah, there, there's always eight staff on site.
Okay, so they.
And if we're implementing, you know, maybe to answer your question, if we're not doing the valet system, yes, there may be less staff on site as children start to arrive. They're certainly all there as, you know, full enrollment gets there. But if we're gonna impose this, this valet system, then if we need all staff there in the morning to adequately, you know, staff the valet system, then they will be there in the morning.
Right, that was, that was gonna be my question. If, if the valet system is implemented, then you'll obviously need some people to be shuffling them in and out and some people to be inside watching the kids. So we should assume that there'll be nine spots probably occupied by employees in the morning. And let's say if we're looking at this from a worst-case scenario where you implement the valet system, nine spots will be consumed, so that leaves 11 extra, right?
Nine, actually. Not, not including the ADA. We're not including the ADA spot in our calculations because it figures it, you know, won't be used, really.
Okay, do you have this one, Adam?
Yeah, yeah, that's the one I'm looking at.
Okay.
Okay.
And I didn't see, I just want Jeff Paul, one second, Cara. I just want to see Jeff Paul. Where is Jeff here? Oh, there he is. Sorry, Jeff. You're next to Cara. I didn't see. You're good, Jeff? Any questions? Good, okay. Cara, one more?
All right, one more. And I believe this was addressed at an earlier meeting, but it's not anticipated, correct, that there will be a step, like a, a full or a quick service cafeteria or anything that would require sort of large box truck deliveries that would take up spots. I think I, I remember that it was just going to be, you know, a student brought snacks and food and then teacher, there'd be a refrigerator for, you know, staff food. I did, I did not recall there being a quick or full service cafeteria requiring sort of box truck deliveries. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
That was my understanding. Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you. Anything else, Bob? Because I want to open up this up to the general public one more time.
That's all we have. I think the only issue was the valet parking for, for this evening.
That's deemed necessary. Is anybody in the general public would like to speak to this application? Please turn on your camera, turn on your microphone, turn on your smile. I don't see anybody. Greg, anything else to add after this whole bucket discussion?
No, I, I, I think we're okay. I'll just mention that, you know, those small children are a percentage of the overall class, so not every kid is being taken out of a car seat.
So I don't have 56 buckets going in and out?
That's correct.
Got it. All right. Jeremy, anything to add? Okay, and with regards to trucks, we can limit truck deliveries to certain hours, too. They're gonna have something going, but anyway.
The biggest delivery you're gonna have is children.
Yeah, I mean, you might have napkins and paper plates or something, who knows? Yeah, I mean, you might have napkins and paper plates or something, who knows?
Sort of stuff.
Alright Bob, we're ready to close if you're, if you're, if you're all ready.
I'm all set. I think we covered everything. Thank you. Thanks, thank you everyone.
Okay, um, are we going to adjourn motion to close? Kara makes a motion, Adam makes a second, all's in favor. Five, nothing. Fantastic. Alright, thank you very much folks. Uh, we'll deliberate this when? Then our next meeting is the twenty-second? Yeah, okay. Um, so we might deliver this tonight and if, you know, we do, then they can write it up for the twenty-second. Alright, next item, um, continuous or public hearing regarding subdivision application number six seventeen B is in Boyd, landfilling regrading application number four thirty-nine A, uh, one seventy-five Brookside LLC at one seventy-five Brookside Road. The proposal is to raise the existing single family dwelling and other accessory structures on the four point five three plus minus acre lot and to subdivide the property into two billing lots respectively, two acres and, um, two point five three acres in size. The proposal is to regrade the property to accommodate the construction of two, uh, two conceptual single family dwellings associated pools and hardscape. The subject property situated on the west side of Brookside Road at its northwest corner formed by the intersection of Stonewall Lane and the shown assessors map number five as lot number thirteen in the R two zone. Public hearing opened on February eighth, twenty twenty-two. Jeremy, what do we got?
Sure, the commission members may recall that this was the subject of a prior application a few years ago, which was approved by the commission to divide the subject property into two lots. That subdivision was never finalized and thus, uh, still one lot. Since that time, most recently within the past few months, the existing single family residents and other outbuildings have been demolished from the property. So if you've been to the property, you would see that it is a vacant lot currently. There are inland wetlands on the eastern side of the property along Brookside Road, both to the north and the south of the existing driveway. The EPC, the Environment Protection Commission has had, uh, I think a few nights of public hearings on this matter and they sent in their report earlier today, which was emailed to the commission and included in the file. In that report, you can see notes that they've closed their public hearing and they will be deliberating and deciding this matter at an upcoming meeting in March or April. There, obviously their main concerns were, uh, impacts to wetlands, impacts on flooding. They did look a little bit at the uh, we have hired Joe Canis of Time Bond as a peer review engineer to look at stormwater management and sediment erosion controls. I don't think there's anything else, Fred, that you can figure out. That pretty much covers attorney Bob Maslin is here on behalf of the applicant. And along with him is engineer Doug DeVesta.
Could you just give me a quick, um, and, and, and I a diff, the difference of the subdivision between the old one that was approved and this new one? Do you have, tell me, do you remember?
Uh, it'd be hard to ask to say, I don't know Bob or Doug can.
I can, I, Doug or I can, uh, one of us will.
I can show you, I can show you the old subdivision. Steve, if you want to see that compared to this one.
Okay, when, when your, when your turn comes up, that would be great. I appreciate that though.
Okay.
Alright Bob, why don't you go ahead? Start us off, sir.
Okay, uh, for the record, Robert Maslin representing the applicant, I can, I don't know who's in charge of the go to meeting, but can somebody, let me share my screen, whoever it is.
TV seventy-nine people.
Yep, I got it.
Screen.
That all good for you?
Uh, something's weird. Hold on. For some reason, uh, my PowerPoint's not cooperating here. Um, bear with me for a second. Why isn't this? Let me just try one other thing. Nah, it's still not working. Alright, well. Let me try it again. Okay. Got that, got that. I'm going to, um, do something really quick here and I'll be right back with you. I think I just have to reset this so that for some reason it's not picking up my screen unless there's something else that you need to do, but I'm clicking my screen thing and it, there's nothing here. So let me, let me just check out, I'll be right back.
Okay, Dr. Back, can you do your piece Doug?
Uh, yes, I can Steve.
That'd be great.
Sure. Can I, can I have the screen please? The presenter?
Yep, give me one second. Okay, you should be good to go.
Okay, let's see. Let's take that one, share that one. Okay, so. Okay, okay, for the record, my name is Doug DeVesta, professional engineer. Uh, Steve, you asked to, to look at the comparison between the, uh, old subdivision that we did back in twenty eighteen. Um, this is the property, we, we had a house in this, you know, in the two lots again, common, uh, coming off the Brookside to the, to the first house, the back house, uh, coming off the Stonewall. The, the, the big difference is the front lot houses, the general same location, drive, driveway is coming in off of Brookside same way. Um, on the back lot, uh, the driveway was coming in following my cursor, uh, to, to a garage on the west side. We had a seven foot high retaining wall along the upland review area, the fifty foot upland review area. Um, and that's really, and then we had drainage system in, in the front and septic in the back, same thing on the, on, on the back lot there. The septic on, or the front lot was on the side there. Now we come, come fast forward, let's see if I get to my other one. Um, so now this is the current subdivision that's before you tonight, um, the driveway.
Yeah, sorry. Do you know that this is in black on our screen?
Is it all black or not?
The background's black and all the words yellow.
Yeah, that's correct. This, this is, this is actually my, this is actually my, my AutoCAD file.
Correct, I thought so, okay.
Okay, so it's just easier for me to move things in and out quicker, quicker this way than versus going in a PDF. Um, I do have a rendering, um, I can try to get that up for you in a second, but I just wanted to just go over a quick review. Okay, let me get my, um,
Because we can barely see, we can barely see, that's better. That's standard Doug DeVesta we like to see.
There you go. Okay, okay, so, um, okay, so this is, this is what's before you tonight. Again, two lots subdivision, uh, lot one is a little over two acres, highlighting, um, and see the property line is right here, down and around. So that's lot one, two acres. Lot two is two point five, which is coming down along, um, Stonewall and up. Um, this house, the front lot, house is in a general same location, coming off of Brookside, off the common driveway, put a little circle in front, up and around to the um, side, to the north side of the house for the garage. The back lot coming in off of Brookside, um, but we have, but we flipped the house so that the garage is on the east side versus the west side. We've got, uh, two small wing walls here, um, there, and they are only um, the highest point, um, several feet tall, um, you know, the, the three foot, the three foot high height, these two wing walls, there's windows on this side, um, so we're grading up to those windows, um, and then that reduces the height of the walls. We provided a short walk along the north side just to keep the grading from going out into the upland review area. So that's, that's really the difference between the previous approval back in twenty nineteen and, and, and this site plan here. Um, Bob, are you up, you up running now?
Is that a walkout facing on that side?
Yes, he's not. No, there's no walkout on the, um, on the west side of the house. Um, Meredith from Hilton Architects are here, she can go over the, um, the, um, floor or the elevations of the house, but this, there's just windows on this side here. There's no, there's no walkout. Um, in terms of drainage, um, the, the site basically has a watershed that goes from north to south approximately through the center of the property. Anything on the east side will flow back towards the, oh, oh, Farmer's Drain, which is the low spot and also drains from Brookside towards, um, the Farmer's Drain. And anything from the west side will flow in a westerly direction um, towards, either towards Stonewall or the wetlands along the Westerly property line. Uh, we're proposing to collect the runoff from the roof areas um, and the driveway up to the circle. That will be detained in an infiltration system, uh, detention system here uh, for the two, ten, twenty-five, fifty-year design storms and handle the first, and handle the, uh, water quality of, on the first flush. Um, then that will be metered out through the stroke control outlet structure here to a level spreader and then sheet flow out towards the, the wetlands area. Then for the back lot, lot number one, um, roof leaders, pool patio area and the driveway will be directed towards another infiltration system here, again, being controlled, released out so that the two, ten, twenty-five and fifty-year design storm is equal to or less than pre-development conditions. Um, the septic systems, um, are designed both for, uh, six bedrooms. They've been, um, reviewed by the health department and the feasibility of the plans have been approved by the health department. Um, we are on usable water, that was water on, um, Stone, on Stonewall will be fed to the front house and a new line will be brought in to service the, the rear lots. Um, in terms of sullen erosion controls, um, we've got silk fence, um, along any disturbed areas, double row silk fence as per requested by the EPC, um, along the wetlands line and along, uh, Brookside and up along the property line between the front and rear lot and also along the, um, Westerly boundary of the upland review area on the, on the, uh, Westerly lot. Um, I think that's basically it. Some of the other issues that we had, we had, we provided, you know, in terms of EPC, we provided some mitigation for wetlands, um, in the, on the front side, front property. The blue lines, um, are tree protection um, that the EPC requested us to provide. So those are what those blue lines are in this plan here. Um, that's basically what, what we're proposing. Maybe if Bob's back, maybe you can go a little more detail um, what he had his presentation about. If there's any questions, I can answer them now or I can wait for, to later on.
Well, I was trying to make sure I'm on the same page. Uh, uh, lot number two and lot number one on the north side of the property, there's, there's a square on my plan that's in the middle of those two and it says new meadow in the middle.
Right here.
Does that go, yeah, right bingo. Is that part of, part of lot two?
This is, this is, this is the boundary right here of lot one and two. So this portion, this is this portion where my cursor is right now, that's the, that's the, that's the wetlands meadow we're creating and this is the meadow we're creating in the upland, upland area. So it goes in both lots, both, it's all in lot one there.
Okay, is that some kind of fence you put in between on the, on the left side of the meadow?
Yes.
That's the, that's the left side of the meadow.
Yeah, I guess Bob, I guess Bob is back now.
I'm try, I'm trying.
Stay where you are. Let me go around to the commission's committee convention on this site, because this is the more, most important aspect of it. I gotta cut. Jeff Paul, you want to chime in first with any question you might have? You're good? Kara?
I just, sure, um, duh, whoever wants to answer. Uh, so what's the increase of impervious surface now that we're adding? I think there already was a pool. There was a house, you know, it's been demolished, but from what it was to now, two houses, two pools, you know, an increase of one driveway. So what's the total increase of impervious surface from before?
Um, from this application compared to twenty eighteen's come?
I, I just want to
or, or back, or back to the, when the original site was done.
I guess it doesn't look like they're going to do a fresh meadow approach, so I think we have to understand what the change in condition is going to be.
We, we did fresh meadow.
Oh, you did? Okay.
We did, oh yes, yes.
Okay, so you are doing fresh meadow, okay.
Kara, the only thing that we did not, what we kept, yes, there was an existing house.
Yep.
Um, if you bear with me for a second, I can pull up on that, it's too hard to do up now, but there's, the existing house is about here. There was also a detached garage back in here with a paved driveway that came all the way through the site and there's also a circular driveway in here. So I didn't, yes.
We lost your screen. You're, you're
Oh, you did.
Let me see if I can, uh, do the screen now because I, I think it's going
How's that?
But I think Doug you pretty much answered my question. I think if you are with the stormwater management, with the treatment, um, the runoff mitigation, I think if the fresh meadow approach was, is being applied, then that kind of gets to what my concern was and what my, you know, where my, what my question was really, what, what the concern behind my question was.
Okay, so just to
It's going to chime in too. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to, just to, just to be totally open with you is that we did fresh meadow. We took, you know, we took as fresh meadow, but we, we kept the existing portion of the driveway up to here as existing condition. That's, that's staying, that's not, not removing that, but that's staying. Um, and that has, and I, I think Joe can back me up on this, is that this has, this has no really impact to the overall drainage, this little bit of driveway that we're providing here, leaving it as pre and post development, but we did look at the whole site as a fresh metal calculation and we did show a zero increase in runoff for all design storms required.
Thank you so much. That was, that was what I was concerned about. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, before I let you go Doug, um, George Riley, any questions at this point? And Adam?
I, I just, I'm not familiar with the, uh, farmer's well, is it called? What Okay, farmer's drain. To where does that drain? Does that just percolate into the soil?
No, what it is George is that, um, if you go further north of our property, uh, up towards the Darian Country Club's accessway, maintenance access, there was a subdivision there years ago, um, and then what be, I, I was involved in that subdivision back in the nineties. Uh, there's a farmer's drain, a farmer's drain is basically, um, three-sided channel, uh, with stone on the sides and a, and a capstone. And it, it runs through the three properties, right, one, two, three properties north of us, starting up at the open space just, just south of the Darian Country Club accessway and it goes down through our property, um, that basically is collecting, um, groundwater, so that, that's pulling the groundwater in, um, and then that channels down through here under our driveway. Then it goes into, then it's piped through this lower, the southern portion of our site to a catch basin in Stonewall and then goes under the Stonewall and then open, opens another open ditch and heads down south of us. Um, back in twenty nineteen, we got approved through EPC. Um, there was problems with this, you know, the, the, the farmer's drain, capstones were, were falling in. There was, uh, blockage in the pipe itself. They put a camera up the pipe, that was blocked and we revoked, we amended, amended our approval back in twenty eighteen, uh, to come in and replace the pipe from the south of our driveway to the, to about forty feet in, then tied back into an existing pipe into a catch basin and then put a pipe under the driveway and then we put all the capstones back on the farmer's drain, north of our, north of our driveway. So now the, now the water's uh, flowing freely through the farmer's drain, under the driveway and out towards Stonewall.
Terrific, that's, that answers where the water goes. I appreciate it.
Correct. You're welcome.
Go ahead, Adam. You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
We got everybody then. Alright, um, Bob, you want to go next? And, and if you're back up to, there we go, and then we'll wait for Joe Canis after.
I don't know what, what I did to deserve this, uh, technical glitch, but, uh, this is just kind of an overview. Subdivision, um, the usual stuff that goes with it, new stormwater management, new septic, uh, maintenance of the farmer's drain, regrading is necessary and I'll, uh, Doug, I think talked a little bit about that. Landscaping, removal of invasements, invasives, and then we talked about, uh, some of the wetland issues. Aerial photographs for George's benefit, uh, we have here Stonewall. Uh, is Stonewall Lane is here, the project The project site is right here where the red ball is bouncing around. And I'll show you in a second on the next slide where the wetlands are and all of that. But there are a fronting lot here, a driveway to a rear lot to the north of that, another fronting lot, and then open space area to a three-lot subdivision up farther up Brookside. The maintenance for the Darian Country Club is over here where my red dot is bouncing around there. So the next, there we go, slide. As you can see, there is a, I mean, if you know anything about Brookside Road, to the west of it, there is a very, very long wetland system that runs right up through Dorchester and the pond. It eventually mates up with Goodwives River at some point. And this little blue line here is what the farmer's drain is, drain is today. As the blue line extends up into the adjacent property to the north, apparently at some point that was converted from a channel to a pipe with a catch basin right here. And then as you go farther up, there's a driveway right about in here, a driveway that goes to the rear lot, and then another driveway. And what happens in major, major storms is water collects in between these driveways because there's no way to drain to the south or downstream. And that eventually absorbs into the ground. There is a retention basin farther up that was done as part of either the good country club maintenance facility or the three-lot subdivision farther up. So this is the wetland layout. And this is obviously a close-up. And you can see, this was done in 2019. Doug mentioned replacing the pipe. You can see this work being finished up here. The pipe is covered. You see the silt fences on either side and you also see the farmer's drain with capstones on it. And then you see a catch basin up here on the adjacent property and a little bit of a darker line here from the catch basin down to the site. So that's hopefully a good way to orient you. This is the simplified map. It's, it's the survey, obviously. The difference between the two subdivisions is, as I, the best I can remember, this line here was a little bit farther to the south and it turned up right about in here somewhere. And this is an adjustment to accommodate the new proposals for development in a way that most significantly reduced the amount of regrading on lot number one, which I think Doug touched on, but you'll see if you really look closely at the, at the grading. But that's the subdivision. New driveway over here off Stonewall going to lot number one and the existing driveway to remain for lot number two. This is Doug's plan. This is the area I'm talking about with the regrading. In the plan that was, it's kind of an interesting permitting history. When this went through the system in 2018 and 2019, the EPC approved the plan and the plan had that original common boundary location. But it also had this driveway over on the left side of the house or the west side of the house. And that required roughly seven feet high retaining wall along in here in order to make a level place for the driveway. And what, what, as I understand this, and I wasn't involved in it, EPC approved it. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the two-lot subdivision but denied the development on lot two, most likely because of the extent of the grading over here and the fact that they would have wound up with a seven-foot retaining wall. This plan significantly reduces the amount of grading. It keeps all of the activity outside the upland review area that's adjacent to this off-site wetland to the west. And it reduces this, I'll call them wing walls, down to about three, three and a half feet. And there's a little bit of a shift in the grade on either side, obviously. And you'll see in the elevation, this, there's a series of windows down at the lower level of the house out here. And that's, that's a pretty significant change for the better, I think, because it, it, it leaves us closer to the original grade. The other big change is Doug might have mentioned is there's an area that's going to be planted and fenced along the northern boundary and along the southern boundary. And I have square footages for these later. And then also an area on either side of this farmer's drain. This will be demarcated with stones taken from the channel and elsewhere if they need to, and then fencing along the rest of it.
Okay. I think you mentioned that the farmer's drain per EPC requirements, they are, they requested us to remove the capstones to make an open channel versus a closed channel.
Correct. Correct. Now, the closed channel seemed to have been working, but we're going to take the capstones off as EPC wants us to. This is lot one, garage over on the right-hand side. And this is roughly facing Stonewall. And then you see the grade drop off here and then those retaining walls or wing walls will come up. This is the rear of the property. Two and a half story houses. And that little lower level set of windows I mentioned are right here. So it's, you know, basement level, three-car garage over on the east elevation. Lot number two. This faces generally in the direction of Brookside, the front elevation, rear elevation, and then the two side elevations. This is on the north side of it. So when you pull in, the driveway goes around that circle and then curves over to the north and over to these garages. And then the other side is a couple of windows and that end of the house. This is a little more detail on the wetland mitigation. These dark colored areas are the mitigation areas. They're going to be fenced, fenced off. And in order to protect the channel here and to keep it in a, in a condition where it has a little bit of meadow and some wetland plantings, Matt Pop came up with this plan. There's nothing on this side until you get to the boundary and there's a rectangular new meadow fenced in down along the southern boundary.
You want to give us the acreage of those two, those three parcels now or you want to wait till later?
They're right here.
I can't.
Okay. The enhancement areas you're talking about?
The ones in red. You got it. You did, uh?
Right here. Northern boundary, 17,000 square feet in wetlands, which is a combination of these two. This is the common boundary here between the two lots. So we end up with a total of 17,905. And then the upland fringes to the east and west are another 6120 feet. Along the southern boundary, these are the numbers, 3384 in wetlands and 3131 in the upland review area. And then you have the area along the farmer's drain, 1,850 square feet. So the total enhancement areas are down here. A little over a half acre in wetlands and a little under a quarter acre in the upland review area. Then we have the farmer's drain. These are some photographs prior to the 2018 improvements. You can see what this, let me just give you a little bit of interesting trivia. The applicant in 2018 did the work on the farmer's drain and replaced the pipe as a contract purchaser. And then for reasons that some people might know, he became distracted, walked away from the deal, never purchased the property, and he's no longer with us. So this is helpful background because it's, you know, kind of a photo history of what it was prior to the improvements that were done after the last go-around. This is what the inlet end of the culvert under the driveway used to look like. You can see there's no pipe here at all. You have really an undefined channel with some rocks, not terribly effective when it comes to conveying water. This is afterwards, and this is taken September 24th, 2021 at 7:30 in the morning after a almost three-inch rain, 2.81 inches. The rainfall ended before this picture was taken, but you can see there's good water flow coming down into the, into this culvert. This is another photograph, January of this year, after a 1.29 inch rainstorm. And again, you can see water flowing across the top of the stones. There's still a little freeboard on either side, the silt fences here from the demolition work. And the water ends up being conveyed under these rocks and eventually makes its way into the pipe. Okay. This is the pipe. As it existed in January of this year. So the pipe is here, it's clear. On the right-hand side, you see, I guess that scour or basically from the velocity of the water, keeping the, keeping it moving so that you don't end up getting too silted up. January 6th, there's a little bit of a buildup here. This is really maintenance, which is going to have to be pursued diligently and it's in our drainage maintenance plan, which we submitted to the EPC. And I think it's in the record here, but if not, it will be. And this is, this is basically it. One of the issues that occurred previously, and this is in between the pipe being replaced and the current applicant purchasing the property, which is later latter part of last year, there was a trash rack a few inches inside this pipe that consisted of what looked like vertical rebar, just stuck in holes in the pipe. And at one point back, I think it was 2018 or maybe 2019, debris got caught up in it and clogged and it just caused a backup. But we don't know who took these, that trash rack out, but it's out now. So that's where we are on that. Now, what I think I want to do, I just want to go back and, because I know somebody might have a question. I'll go back to this. Doug, can you talk about this trash rack?
Sure.
In years' term so that everybody can understand what's going to happen with this. And this trash rack is over here at the inlet to the pipe. Go ahead, Doug.
Okay. So the picture that Bob just showed you is the 12-inch pipe that goes under the driveway. And then what we're going to put on the outside of it will be a trash rack. It will be basically consist of a rebar welded together on an, on an angle and then placed on the pipe itself. And then, so when, when water flows to it, as a debris in the water, it will push, it will push the debris up the incline of the trash rack and keep the water flowing freely underneath it. And so this way it doesn't get blocked up. As Bob mentioned, there was vertical rebar inside the pipe there that would not allow the debris to be moved, but get, cause it to block, to cause it to block up and then back up the water. By, by putting the trash rack on an angle like that, it allows the debris to be pushed up and allows to keep the water flowing freely under the debris.
Okay. Now I got to figure out how to shut this off. Oh, there we go. Okay. So just to recap on the site plan, we have grading over here on lot one with infiltration system here for the stormwater. Your septic is up along the top. Both septic systems were approved by the health department. And I believe the letter is, it's either a referral response or a separate letter that we put in the record. Down here is, Doug, this is septic, right? And then over here.
That's correct, Bob.
On, on lot two, you have the drainage, again, infiltration system. The outlets are here, level spreader and down on the western side, another level spreader. And that's for the basically over 50-year storm overflow. There's another infiltration system here. The EPC asked a question about groundwater being above the elevation of the basement on any of these houses on the, on the lot number one house, there's no issue there. On the lot number two house, there may be a few inches, maybe a foot or two that will be addressed with footing drains. And this infiltration system has a design capacity that will handle the groundwater that gets pumped, some pumped into it.
Bob, say that again. How many inches or a foot or two?
Doug?
I think it's more than, I think it's like three, three plus feet of water that the basement was sitting in there. And we did, we did an analysis of the volume of the water that would be pumped out of the, out of the basement area. And we provided a infiltration system that can handle that, that volume of water. And those are calculations where in the package, addressing one of Joe Canis's comments on that. And I believe Joe has reviewed them and he was satisfied with the calculations and the design we have here. And Joe will be able to address that in a few minutes.
Okay. Let me ask one question before you keep going, Bob. The one, the one trash rack, is that on the north side of the driveway or the south side of the driveway?
The north side, Steve.
That's before it goes down the driveway.
Right. The, the inlet side, which is the, is the north side of the driveway.
Okay. And then Jeremy's got to go before we move on.
easier if you're getting, going down so deep to that basement that you're getting three feet of water, wouldn't the logical thing to be, to do is not go down as far so you're pumping out less water every single day?
It doesn't make any sense to me.
Instead of doing a nine-foot basement, do an eight-foot basement or do less of a basement. Wouldn't that solve the problem?
I think we did, we did, we did reduce the depth of the basement, height of the basement. But we then, we did, we did the analysis on it and I don't remember, I don't have the numbers right in front of me right now, but I can pull them out to determine how much water we're pumping out. And we do have it, we do, to do a system that will handle that, the, the volume of water.
You designed a basement to flood up to three feet?
No, what they're getting, my understanding is that when they dig the hole for this basement, they're going to keep digging until they hit water. And they're going to have to pump out water constantly, so they'll need a some pump and a generator and then a contact.
Well, it's on a construction or when it's finished?
Well, we've got, well, during construction, what we have is a silk sack that the water be pumped into that, that will collect, it'll collect this, the water and collect any silt from going out into the wetlands area, which is kind of a common practice. But once the foundation is in, the some pumps are in, then we provided a infiltration system for footing drains that will handle the volume of water that we're pumping out of the basement there. We looked at a. We looked at a.
But you didn't, you didn't really answer Jeremy's question. Wouldn't it make sense to make it a smaller, a less deep basement?
Well, we do have crawl space. The whole house is not, is not a, a full basement. The, the southern portion, the southern little wing is, is on crawl space. So we, so we, we took that into consideration when we, when they designed the house, our clients designed the house, that we have got a small, got a crawl space in the, in the south, southern portion of that property. And we did raise the house up. I can't, I can't tell you right, I gotta look at my drawing here, see how much.
So we talked about this section that's under the garage?
The section under the garage.
No, the southern portion.
The southern part of that says crawl space only, no footing.
Correct.
But then the north, the northern side of the garage, the northern side of the house is the garage. The garage is not.
Correct, that, and that's on slab. We are.
The garage is on slab, right? The garage is always on a slab.
Right. Doug, it's the center of the house, right?
Just the center portion of the house, correct.
And the pipe, there's a pipe that runs over to this system here.
So the existing.
It's not all year, it's only when the groundwater is up at that level.
Right, correct.
Where is that pumping that water out? Where is that, when you're pumping all this water out, both during construction and because it's under, right, you're hitting water to make, have this basement go as deep as it's going? Where is, where are you pumping, where is this water going? Right, underground currently, and now we're disturbing it and we're displacing it and pumping it out. And right, we already know there's this farmer's drain, which is taking and directing water that's coming upstream from like by the country called a dairy and that subdivision. So where is this water going?
Well, right where Bob's, right where Bob's dot is right there, that's the infiltration system. Basically, think of it as a, a leaching system for, for groundwater. So is it just a bed of stone and, and pipes running through that that will allow the water to go back into the ground itself? So it's, so it's taking it back in again.
So it'll take it back in, it'll go through the stones, which will both slow it down.
Correct.
Create, it'll slow it, and then there's this wetlands meadow area that's been created. And so I guess between those things, we're not going to create an adverse water impact on downstream neighbors, are we?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, the existing grade right to the center of the house is that one, at that 158, and the first floor is at 161. So we did raise this up considerably from, from, from existing grade.
This is a, a good improvement because we're fresh metal approach here, which is retaining more water than was being detained before. And it's all, the water quality is in place, and these systems won't reach capacity until you hit the 50-year storm. So it's a pretty significant improvement over the previous conditions.
A hundred percent, yeah, I mean, I get it. The old had, had no thing, but I've, I've never seen a guy design a, a basement that's supposed to hold three feet of water.
It doesn't, it, it pumps it out.
A pool.
Sometimes, not, not for the entire year. But this is a, Doug, is this a common engineering practice?
In terms of some pumping, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, we are, we are, we have, we have monitoring, so we are kind of monitoring the groundwater out there as well. And, and you know, it's going to fluctuate throughout the year.
Is this guy building, he planning on living in his house? Or is he specing it to sell it? Because I hope he discloses all of this, like, that there's going to be a pool on the waterfront.
It's going to be a spec house, man. All right, we, we have Joe Canis chiming in on this one, but keep going.
I have one slide left with the environmental considerations. Most of this has to do with EPC, but everything is outside inland wetland and upland reviewer areas except, oh, on lot one and a little bit on lot, a little bit of the activities are in the upland reviewer area. The infiltrators specifically on lot two. The development activities in the upland reviewer area on lot two are reduced from the previous plan. 18% increase in the mitigation area approved previously. And obviously, you know, new stormwater management systems and co-compliant septic. And then maintenance plans in place for stormwater management systems and for the farmer's drain to address concerns about debris blocking up the farmer's drain and keeping it out of the pipe and, and taking a look at the trash rack periodically to make sure it's not getting backed up or clogged. And, and that's basically our application. We comply with all these zoning and subdivision regulations. There's some mitigation or wetland enhancement going on. The farmer's drain is a big improvement because apparently there's been a history of that old drain not working at all when it was very prior to 2018. And when the trash rack was in, unmonitored, it, it caused a backup. But all of that's remedied now. And we've, like I said, we've covered all the zoning issues. So that's all I have.
Okay, and just, just to, to confirm, this stormwater management plan is being recorded in the land records for both houses?
Yes. And we'll do it however you want. I think the best way is to have a separate one for each lot. Once we get, once we get the map done, we'll have two separate ones. And then we can refer to them by address and all of that. But they're drafted, they're, I believe they're in the record. And if not, they're in the EPC record. But you know, it's the standard stuff. And it'll include maintenance of the farmer's drain, the pipe. And that's it, so.
And the, and to make sure that the, the sub pumps are on generators, all right. Let's move on, let's move on to Joe Canis, since he's there. And you know, I know that he did his pair of letters. No, take it away, sir, give us your look on this one.
Okay, great, thank you. For the record, Joseph Canis, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I were retained by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the EPC for the review of the stormwater management aspects of the application. We also reviewed the erosion controls and landfilling and regrading for the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. So I issued two letters. The first was dated January 26th with my initial comments. And that was based on a field visit that I had done on January 19th with staff. And the applicant responded, and I issued a second letter on February 16th with almost all the comments fully addressed. There were some additional questions that were addressed during the last EPC hearing. And I was satisfied with those responses. So most of my comments were, you know, technical nature. A lot of comments about coordination between the plans and the calculations, just some consistency comments there. In, in terms of stormwater, the applicant is essentially using the fresh metal approach. They did not take credit for any impervious surface that previously existed on the site except for the existing driveway. I did have a concern with that initially. I did run through the calculation myself. And the area is so small compared to the balance of the site that it would not make a difference in any of the hydrologic models that the applicant used. It's like, you know, it's well within the tolerance of rounding error for the purposes of the model. So for, for this particular instance, I'm okay with that approach. Not including in the computations wouldn't have changed the design. In terms of the some pump, the applicant did provide calculations that would show that, that the cultech volume is sufficient for the level of water that was recorded in the monitoring well. You know, there, there's no hard or fast guidance unfortunately on these. You know, having obviously some pump run continuously is not ideal. So the extent that you can reduce the amount, the, the height of the basement to reduce the amount of water that you're pumping is always a good thing. I know from firsthand experience, having your some pump fail and having your basement flood is no fun. So I, I would encourage the applicant to set the basement height to the minimum possible. But at the same time, they have provided accommodations for that water volume that would be pumped based on the monitoring while they set up. Also, the applicant has made, got, gone a little above and beyond the requirements of the application in terms of stormwater. They are making improvements to the farmer's drain area, though there was really no hydrologic or hydraulic reason for them to do so. They were able to demonstrate that they're not increasing peak flows off the site, and they would not be worsening flooding conditions upstream. But this, the improvements to the farmer's drain are in our general benefit and make maintenance easier. So it's certainly to the benefit of the project. And so those, those are basically the key comments that I had. I was satisfied with the sediment erosion controls. I had some additional comments on those, which the applicant incorporated into their plans. I also had some minor filling and regrading comments, which the applicant also had incorporated into their revisions. So I am generally satisfied with the, the plans as they are today.
Great, thanks, Joe. You always do a good job. And, and the technical questions are really important, but I'm more concerned with your overriding approval. And I know you and, and Doug DeVesta go at, you know, work together hand in hand quite often. I just want this thing to work, that's for sure.
Absolutely, yeah, we all do.
Yeah, of course. But I, I mean, I get higher to the basement, the basement, but I don't want anyone coming back to us in five years, you know, my basement flooded, nobody told me. What else? Commissioners, are there any questions at this point before we open up to the general public? To any, either Joe or Doug or, or Bob?
No, just, I am going to go, I, I may have additional questions. I am going to go back and watch the EPC public hearing. And when they do their deliberations, obviously, I, I would like to know and hear and understand what any sort of issues or additional concerns they have. But I haven't know, I have no, I think it was a really thorough presentation, so.
I don't know if we'd be able to do that, because that brings in all kinds of knowledge that the EPC received that you guys didn't receive, because they received.
Oh, no, I, I received it. I, I looked at the record, I just didn't watch their meetings.
But we're going to get their report, their report, their report goes in our.
You have the report.
Okay, I didn't read it today.
The report says that, you know, I don't know.
But you can either, now Bob, stop me if I'm wrong. They can close the hearing and wait for the EPC's final decision if they want. I don't think they need to legally keep the hearing open. If that's the remaining piece that you want, that we can still close the hearing and you can take their final decision if you wish.
That's correct. You can, you can accept, after the hearing closes, you can accept.
The EPC report.
Another agency's record, actually, it would be.
But you can't legally watch their deliberations, go to their meetings, look through their file. Right, the commission can't do that.
Because that's not in our, in our record.
Well, I mean, I can do it as a member of the public, I mean, it's a public meeting, I, I can.
You can as a member of the public, but you can't accept evidence.
No, I'm not saying accept evidence, but we received a letter, and that is not really a final report.
Because we got their report today, but we didn't have their final decision.
If the commission wants to take into account their final decision, you can do one of two things. You can leave the hearing open, push it to a night into mid or late April, accept their decision, or close it and accept their decision. Either way is acceptable.
I'd rather close it and accept their decision.
But, and I think, right, because Joe and Doug, right, the things that would be within our purview that would also be at issue, and I think there's things in our present, in the presentation that Bob presented to us have already been, there's nothing that would come out of there that would be relevant or within our, within our sort of jurisdiction at this point? Because their record is closed, correct?
Their record is closed. And then based on my knowledge of their hearings, which were five or six or seven hours worth, there were a lot of questions about wetlands, wetland plantings, wetland nets. But again, they're the wetlands agency.
No, right.
Go into questions about grading, which you guys talked about, retaining walls, which you guys talked about, other issues which you, which are more subdivision related, which Bob covered tonight. So they did not get into the subdivision lines, you know, where are the lines, where's the boundaries, et cetera. They won't even look at whether it complies with subdivision rights. They don't even look at that question.
Right, and of course not. But I think Bob put into his presentation issues and concerns that EPC discussed, that's on their record, that pertains to our issues. And where they, I think there's overlap dealing with water issues, stormwater management, water displacement and flow like that, where their concern is wetlands and our concern is a different concern. Joe Canis and Doug DeVesta addressed, and that is in the letters and the materials. That is part of our record. Correct?
Doug's work. And Joe Canis and Doug DeVesta covered the overlap.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
One thing, Bob, can you make sure you email your presentation you had tonight to Fred?
Email it where?
To Fred, to Fred, don't I?
Oh, I, I uploaded it to the, to the website.
Oh, cool, okay, so it's already in the record, thank you.
Yeah, it's already there. I'll mail it separately if you want, but.
No, no, it's, it's, because I, I mean, the first time I saw it was tonight. Now I asked Fred if he had it, and we didn't, you know, we was getting an email. But if you upload it to the site, then it's fine, it's part of the record.
Yep.
Because I didn't write down the acreage and square footages of the, you know, metal land area stuff.
All there. And what I, just so you know, what I do with these, as you probably figured out, except for some commentary, the plans and the numbers and all the things that, you know, we would ordinarily put on boards are in the record already. It's just in this case, what I put on the PowerPoint are the most recent version, and that was after we received comments from Rick Talamelli and from the EPC. And we updated the plans based on those. And we also uploaded the plans themselves to the planning and zoning subdivision file online as well. So everything is up to date, and what you saw tonight is already in the record. And it's the most recent version of all the plans.
Okay, I'm going to go around with the other commissioners. But is Matt Pop here, just to go over any landscaping plans? When do we, now, okay.
I thought he was going to be here, but I guess not. Okay.
Let me go to the other commissioners. Adam, you okay with this at this point? Jeff, you okay?
Looks good.
Okay, and where did George go? Hey, George, you okay? All set? Okay, good. All right, would anybody in the general public like to speak to this application? If so, turn on your microphone, turn on your camera, wave hi. Jump up and down. Okay, that's, I would have thought someone was supposed to. We haven't, we didn't get any letters in mail from neighbors or anything, so?
No, no.
Wow, okay, all right. Heard anything else we're missing? We're good? Okay, then we're going to get, we already have the, the report from EPC. We're eventually going to see their final decision, and that could speed part of the file.
Yes.
Correct, okay. So with that said, you're all done, Bob, right? I want to get a motion to close this thing.
Thank you, thank you for all the time you spent on this. Appreciate it, thank you.
With that said, I intend to motion to close this hearing. Jeff Paul makes the motion, looking for a second. Adam makes a second, all's in favor. That is five to, five zero close. Great, fantastic.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thank you, hey, thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Next item on the date is continuation of public hearing coastal site plan review number 376, flood damage prevention application number 420. Next item on the data is continuation of public hearing coastal site plan review number three seventy-six flood damage prevention application number four twenty, landfilling regeding application number four, five twenty-six, Justin Patterson at eleven Searls Road, proposing to construct a four thousand four hundred thirteen plus minus square foot addition to the north side of the existing Singafer residence, construction of realigned driveway and a pool and patio areas and to perform related site activities within regulated areas, including regrading the property and installation of a stormwater management and a new septic system. The one point eight nine plus minus acre subject property is located on the south side of Searls Road in the northern intersection, added sort of intersection with Indian Trail and is shown on a Sessors map as map sixty-six as lot sixty-nine in the R one zone. Uh, the public hearing opened uh, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, in this month, weekly packet, we did not get all the plans of this. This was in your packets prior to twenty twenty-two. So you had to go through your stuff. We have a couple of letters in it, uh, but Jeremy, it's really the first time we're going over this thing, right?
That's correct. Uh, this is the first time we're uh, delving into this. It's an existing house down on Searls Road, but also up front on Indian Trail, now served by uh, proposal to do additions and alterations to the existing residential residence, uh, do some regrading, put in some stormwater management, install a swimming pool, part of the look is in the flood zone. This is also in the coastal area. So that's why the legal list reads coastal cycling review, flood damage prevention and landfilling and regrading. In, in essence, uh, the new house with the additions and alterations and the associated filling will listen uh, take the existing residence or the new residence, if you will, newly renovated residence and add it on to out of the flood zone, which is basically elevating thirteen. Uh, the property as it slopes down to the west will include uh, drainage and as I said, the pool and the existing driveways off both Searls Road and Indian Trail will remain in their same location. Uh, Brian Mysteria.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have all that information from Mr. Ginsberg. I'm going to recuse myself.
You're welcome, sir. All right, you can either sit around, turn off your microphone, turn off your camera.
Yeah, I know, back for the public, for the general meeting.
We'll pay you, sir. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry about that. Uh, so Brian of C and D Engineering is here. Uh, and I believe Amy Zabatakas may also be here uh, representing the applicant. Is that correct, Amy?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct.
I would just like to add very quickly that Darren Ostafine of Department of Public Works submitted comments for the record uh, as well as Jamie Sidoriak of Connecticut Deep submitted comments on the application noting that she had no comment on the submitted application.
And, and we'll get into Darren Ostafine's applications letter, right? So you're done, right, Jim? Okay, and Fred's done. Amy's habitat is, I hear you're driving a train. Take it away, ma'am.
Yes. Getting us started, uh, Amy Zabatakas, Rucci Law Group for the property owner, Justin Patterson. Uh, Mr. Patterson's on the call, um, along with Brian Nescrack, who's the uh, project engineer and our um, project architect, Mark Goodwin. Um, so uh, as was mentioned before, this application was originally on your agenda for February fifteenth and shortly before we were to present, um, we got some comments from one of the neighbors. So rather than presenting at that hearing, we decided to hold off um, talk with the neighbors and um, come back to you tonight. So, you know, I'm pleased to report that that has all occurred and we'll, we'll get into that a little bit. Um, but the application is for coastal site plan review, flood damage prevention and landfilling and regrading. Um, as Jeremy pointed out, there's an existing um, house on the property. It's a historic Fraser Peters design. And so the proposal is to try to expand the house to make a more modern dwelling and then related site improvements. Um, the house, the current house is not centered on the lot. I, I assume you all have the existing condition survey, but you'll see it's sort of pushed down into one of the corners um, along Indian Trail. So, you know, a lot of the area where we would be expanding, um, and particularly where the pool is located is um, pushed over to a side of the property near the neighbors where previously they've had open, open space. Um, however, everything that we're proposing, um, and including the existing dwelling, but certainly all of the additions and the pool are all well within the um, zoning setback lines. Um, let's see, um, so um, as I mentioned, we did get some comments, um, particularly from the neighbor at thirteen Searls, which is to the west of the property. Um, there were some uh, questions about some of the uh, drainage and um, stormwater retention, which Craig Clarity from Redness and Me discussed with Brian Nescrack and um, there is a memo, um, or there was an email sent by Craig confirming that he was comfortable with the plans as discussed with Brian. So, at this point, I'm just going to go ahead and let Brian present since really the permits that we're requesting in this application are all engineered. And then I'll come back with a couple of other comments when he's done.
Sounds like a plan. Thanks, Amy.
Thanks.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Brian Asteriak, I'm a professional engineer in Lance Bear with the MB Engineering. Um, would you like me to share my screen to bring up the plan?
That would be, that would be great. I, we got another point today. I looked at my office. That would be great, sir. Can we do that to you, seven nine?
Yep, just give me one second.
You got. They have to give you, um, they're going to give you the joystick, right?
I should do it. Can you see that?
Yeah, Scott, a perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so everybody can see that?
Yeah, all good. All good.
Okay, good. Um, okay, uh, so uh, again, yeah, one point nine acres, uh, southern side of Searls Road. Uh, the existing house is down here. Um, there is a proposed addition and renovation. The, the renovation will occur obviously uh, uh, for the entire existing house and then this will all be a um, uh, uh, addition. Um, the driveways, so currently there's a driveway that comes in from Searls Road, comes around the house. There's a little parking area over here and goes out over on Indian Trail. Um, that, the connection between the two will be uh, removed and there'll be a driveway that comes in from Searls Road to a courtyard and then there will be a driveway uh, from Indian Trail to access the garages. Um, also there'll be a proposed pool over here on the west side, uh, with a large sloping lawn going down to it. Um, all of these locations, the pool, the driveways, the house and the addition uh, comply with the town's zoning regulations. Uh, it is serviced by public water. Uh, there will be a new septic system, which is over in this area on the northeast side of the property. Um, that has been uh, submitted and approved by the health department. Um, in order to offset the increase in impervious area, uh, there has been a drainage, an underground drainage system um, proposed right here that will collect uh, all of the stormwater off of the roof of the dwelling along with uh, the driveway. Uh, this has been um, designed with the fresh meadow approach. Um, and it will um, reduce flows for up to at least a fifty year storm as is um, required. Um, like um, Amy said, uh, there was a handful of clarifications made um, by the neighbor here on the east and his engineer. We made a few clarifications to grading that occurred here around here and up on this northern driveway. Most of it was just clarifications, um, and additional detail. Um, and after we had um, done those revisions, uh, we were notified that the engineer was satisfied with uh, with what we had done. Um, the proposal itself um, does include some regrading and this eastern side of the property is within the flood zone. Um, some of these areas are below the elevation of thirteen, which is the hundred year flood elevation in this area. Uh, some of the areas um, will be um, increased. Uh, some of the volume will be increased. There's some areas above elevation thirteen over here that will be reduced, same over here. Um, so that will increase the amount of volume um, that's available, but then there's going to be some filling um, that's associated with the house and this pool and this yard. Um, and the end result is that the surface volume that's available on this site after the proposal is in place is two hundred cubic yards less than one, what is there today. So we designed this underground detention system or comp, uh, compensatory storage system uh, to offset that. And this, this will provide at least two hundred and forty-six cubic yards of uh, flood volume. There's three catch basins uh, that are located around this to allow floodwaters to enter during a flood um, event. So essentially what we're doing is increasing the amount of flood volume that's available during a flood uh, during a hundred year flood um, by about forty-six cubic yards. Property was designed uh, to maintain um, most of the mature vegetation that occurs over here. Um, there's also a large knob of ledge, which is uh, essentially going to be remaining. Um, this side is mostly lawn. There are some um, vegetation and mature trees that are along the property line. Some of those uh, will most likely go as part of this. Um, but this, this side is essentially going to remain um, the same. Um, and then there is a robust landscaping plan that has been um, that, that is being worked on as part of this project. Uh, the soil erosion measures have been um, proposed. We have silt fence, construction entrances. We have a detailed set of specifications um, that are typical for a project like this to ensure that the contractor has um, all the uh, correct procedures in place to make sure that nothing downstream will uh, be affected. And um, that pretty much sums up um, the, the, the project and I'll leave it at that and happy to answer any questions.
Sure, great. Appreciate that, sir. Um, a couple of threshold questions. Um, what is, we talked about the ledge rock and the ledge rock is, is very visible when you go out there. Are we touching that at all? Are you doing any chipping or blasting or that stuff?
I, I believe in this area right here, there will be some um, excavation of that area. There might even be some over here just because they're touching it. This dark line is essentially what the surveyor had picked up.
Yeah.
And I assume you all can see my cursor, right?
Yeah, we can. It's not as fancy as, as Bob's.
Sorry.
Well, but that's okay.
Um, so there, there might be some, some uh, minor um, chipping uh, for those areas, uh, but the majority of this is going to remain.
Okay, um, so we got that down, a little bit of chipping. Then what about um, how much dirt are we taking off of this property to build these two foundations in the center and the cul-de-sacs in the pool?
Sure.
How many cubic yards of dirt are we taking out?
So outside of the structures, the um, the excavation is about balance. So we're going to be taking some material out of here. We're going to be taking material out of here and we're going to be placing it over here. When you add in the um, the foundation for this, the pool, these two systems, uh, it's about a thousand cubic yards of net cut that needs to come off of this property.
Okay, and then what's the, how many, I'm just trying to figure out how many trucks we have going out of here because the road system there, I'm sure you've been down there a bunch of times. It's kind of tight.
Mm-hmm.
You really, you can't get any, I, I don't know if your construction entrance is going to be on Searls Road or not, but Indian Trails is really tight.
Sure, that, no, the, the construction entrance will be up on Searls Road and a thousand cubic yards is about fifty trucks. But it's not all at once, obviously. It would be, um, some of it would be done during the, the, the building construction. Um, then when they're going to be putting these in, that'd be another couple hundred yards that would come off and then finally the pool.
Because we always say it's like twenty, he's just doing twenty by fifty, right? There's two hundred, two hundred in a truck. Okay. Um, what kind of time span do you think that is that for these fifty trucks?
I would expect.
Two years?
Oh, I would, I would think it's um, in one season. If I had to guess, it depends on whether the uh, the pool is broken up over um, two seasons or not, but the pool or the building and the, the systems would have to be installed around the same time depending on when they start and finish. So um, the most of it would be from spring to fall.
So the pool might be like a year later.
Yeah, depending on how they build it. I, I don't, I don't think that's all been sorted out just yet. Um, but in my experience, most of the time the pool is, is one of the things that are done later. Um, at least after the construction of the houses um, in place.
So we're, we're taking a lot of the dirt and putting it on this side over here? Which is in the.
I can't see what you're looking at.
It's, I'm, I'm just saying a lot of, and, and I apologize, Brian. I, I might have missed it. On, on the, on the um, what is it? The east side? I would say it's the west side of the property. How much, how, how much are we raising up that elevation on the west side?
A, a couple of feet in some areas. It's, it's almost nothing at the property line. It's a couple of feet in here. Um, and then uh, it's a couple of feet over here.
Okay.
And then over here, we're reducing the area two to three feet, depending on where you are.
That's on the road? That's on the Searls roadside?
Yeah, there's a little, there's a little um, hill here. Um, it's a minor hill, but that'll be taken out as part of um, the effort to increase or offset the, the flood volume that, that we're taking away because a lot of this is above the flood elevation.
Okay, but the, the one plan says you're in the AE flood zone, right?
Yeah, this uh, the AE flood zone, the line is this dash line right here.
I see it. Yep.
And then the proposed, uh, and we do have a, an application into FEMA for this. And then the proposed FEMA line is this.
So you have, you have a flood map revision going on?
We do. We have, we have it submitted to FEMA for their review.
Okay. Uh, that's this new line here, guys.
It's basically.
So it's this area in here that we're essentially um, is, is the offset. But we're also gaining a little bit here and then obviously the underground system.
Okay. Because I mean, it seems like there's a lot of excavation coming out and your net is a thousand. It, it, so you got to spread a lot of that dirt.
Well, they're going to have to remove a thousand yards. I mean, a lot of it has to do with just the excavation of the addition.
Okay.
That's, that's almost half of that.
Okay. But then a lot of it's getting spread out on the, on the open space area.
There's, so, so if you, if you, I don't, I don't want to try to complicate this. But if you remove these three systems and the pool, what you're taking out and what you're replacing it with is balance and it's about six hundred cubic yards. You're just basically moving this around. But because we have to excavate these holes for the pool, this system, this system and the house, there's an additional thousand cubic yards that needs to come off the property.
Okay, great. I want to open up the other commissioners, see if they have any questions at this point and then um, one, you want to, when do you want to talk about Darren Ostafine's letter? Is that, is you want to talk about that now?
Can Brian talk about it?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, we, we got the, the letter from Darren Ostafine because we didn't send this fair review, so we had an internal review. I mean, there's, there's a couple of different things that conflicting here. You guys did a fresh meadow approach on this, right?
We did.
Okay, because Ostafine didn't think you did it, but that's.
He didn't. Um, and technically we didn't have to because it's an addition, but, but I did do it and I, and I talked to, I tried to, to talk to Darren about it, um, but obviously you haven't gotten a follow-up, but um, it, it absolutely has been uh, modeled at, as zero impervious in the existing condition. Um.
Okay. So why don't we go over his letter real quick? Um, do you want to do it? Do you want me to do it?
I'm sorry?
I want to go over his, his email real quick.
Sure.
Comments in his letter.
I don't, I have it in front of me. I, oh, I do have it. Do you want me to go it? Uh, I don't think I can pull it up. That's the only. That's the only thing, um.
Yeah, that's okay.
You want me to just go through it note by note?
Please.
Okay. So number one, uh, subject property is located on the southeast side of Searl's Road and bounded by Indian Trail to the east and south. And other residential property to the west.
Yep.
Two, subject property is located in one acre zone with one point five, eighty, eight-five acres of land mass. Number three, Searl's Road and Indian Trail are both private roads and not under jurisdiction of DPW town. No street opening permit is required. Number four, sewer is not available near the site. Site does not have access to sewer. No sewer connection permit is required. Number five, proposed site development application includes raising existing home, construction of a new home, pool, outdoor shower. New septic system and stormwater management implements. Number six.
That's technically wrong, cause we're not tearing down that house, right? We're keeping the house?
That's correct.
All right, and then the land side, we're, he called the land side one point eight-five acres. We're calling it one point eight-nine acres, but that's. Okay.
So number six, stormwater management review. Engineers report states that there will not be an increase in peak rate. Of runoff from the site as a result of the proposal. Since house is being raised, fresh meadow should be applied to existing condition and was not. Percolation test results are favorable. In parentheses, fast draining. Deep test hole results do not indicate any seasonal high groundwater modeling. Engineers should be applauded for the plethora of test holes information included with the application. Unfortunately, model should be rerun with revised CN for fresh meadow. Flood storage concept is novel. Again, I, I did, I did use the fresh meadow approach. Um, I can show you if you, if you're really that interested. I could show you the report where it is. So I, I'm not sure where we got that from, but um I can try to clarify it with them. In addition. We're reducing the stormwater flows by at least ten percent. With that fresh meadow approach. Um, would you like me to continue?
Yes, please, but so the, the freshman report is, is in the um, is in the record.
Yes, it's, it's in the stormwater management analysis. I can pull that up and show it to you if you really want. Um, but.
We got it. And don't worry about seven and eight, that's fine.
Okay. So yeah, the rest of them are just uh conditions for forms and stuff.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we do have a freshman report. It complies and all that good stuff. Okay, commissioners, any questions at this point? Uh, might start with George Riley? George is out on this one. Good, all right. Um, where is, there, Jeff Paul, why don't you go first this time?
I don't, I don't have anything to ask, so I'm good for right now.
Okay, Adam, you okay?
Uh, yeah, I'm okay right now.
Okay, and then Kara, you okay right, you okay yet?
Yeah, um.
You just turned off your care, Kara?
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. I meant to turn, sorry, I meant to turn on my microphone. I don't know why I turned off my camera. Um. Now, um, I think, and thank you, I, um, Brian, I think you did a good. Uh, thank you for clarifying sort of the discrepancies with Darren's um letter. That was very helpful.
Okay. Um, anything else to add at this point? We, we got all this stuff, right? He signed off, you're signed off?
The, uh, we've received two items for the record. Uh, one is an email from. Party.
Right.
Uh, and the other is a presentation from Wesley. I think Wilder is on the line tonight. Uh, representing a neighbor. I think both, both, both those items were sent to the commission, Fred?
The, the. Wilder's presentation has not uh been emailed to the present, uh emailed to the commission, but I believe he's going over that this evening.
Yeah, so when we open up to the public, these two guys.
Can I, Steve, can I add a few more things I wanted to add before we move on?
Yeah, no problem. We haven't, yeah, I haven't opened up to the public yet. I'm just making sure I got all my um ducks in a row here and all housekeeping done. Go ahead, Amy.
So, uh, just, and just so the record's clear, I know Brian did mention this, but. Um, he did use the freshman approach, but it's, it is important to note that it was not required in this case. Cause this is an addition to an existing dwelling. Um, but however, you know, it is with good engineering practice, he did use that. Um, so the, the issue, and I'll just sort of preview what I um know is going to be coming in from Wilder. Um, the other question that came in from the neighbor had a lot to do with um screening and lighting, those types of things and. Those are not part of this application. Um, they were not required to be addressed. Um, this is purely, you know, flood damage, soil erosion, landfill and regressing. Um, however, um, you know, we did want to obviously speak to the neighbors and, and, and address their concerns. Um. Actually, if I can be given the, the screen now, that would be helpful. So. We, my client has not at this point come up with a formal landscaping plan. Um, nothing has been submitted to the commission. Nothing was requested. However, um, as I stated, the commission, uh, the, there was a request. From one of the neighbors to discuss what was happening with screening. So we do have a preliminary conceptual plan that I'm going to share with you. And I did send to Fred to be uploaded into the portal, but again, it's not, it's not a formal plan. It's not final by any stretch of the imagination. Um, let me see, let's uh.
Agreed, that's, that's fine, but in a lot of these new fancy houses, I mean, this is a four thousand square foot addition to probably a two thousand square foot house, so it's a big house. We usually do get some kind of landscaping plan if someone's going to spend that much, that kind of money on this thing, but.
Right.
It's always good to have.
So, yeah, so here's where we are so far. Can you, can you see that on your screens?
Perfect.
So again, it is not final. Um, we don't, I don't have a list of proposed plantings or anything of that uh nature for you at this time. But it is sort of the start of where we are. Um, I think important for, so thirteen Searls is over here to the west. Um, and they were the neighbor particularly that was um had some concerns. The plan along the property line is to have a very tall, very thick hedge. Um, ultimately will be around ten feet tall. Inside of that hedge, there will be a pool fence. Beyond the pool fence, there will be um substantial uh ornamental landscaping. So as you can see, the area buffered between the pool and thirteen Searls will be. The plan is for that to be quite well screened. Um, you know, frankly. My client has zero interest in being able to be seen while he's in the pool by any of the neighbors in the area. Um, so uh, let's see, and then. Let me just make sure I didn't miss anything. Um, the other thing is, is like I said, because there will be some substantial landscaping, there will not even be any. Real recreational activity within that side yard setback, so it is um really in some ways more. Of a protection than is required um between the neighbors. And as I said, everything is within the setback, so. While this is something new to these neighbors, because they've had all this open space next to them, it is. Um, allowed um for residential use. Similarly, you know, there's no plans for any sort of um. Exterior sound system. There's no plans for any tall lights. Um, there will be, you know. Traditional landscaping, security lights um around the pool area, around the house as a whole. But everything will be in keeping with the residential neighborhood and the residential na- nature of this property. Um, you know, my client has no intention of doing anything that wouldn't be um, you know, in keeping with, with the area as a whole. Um. So I think that is, that sort of addresses the concerns that were raised um by thirteen. I know there was a letter submitted, I think today or yesterday. From another neighbor that sort of raised similar concerns. Um, and I think they've all been addressed between the conversations that. Um. Brian had with Craig and then, like I said, I'm not prepared to commit to a formal landscaping plan, but at least. You, everyone can see sort of where we're planning on going with this.
Okay, um, can we call this a conceptual landscaping plan?
Yeah, you can call it conceptual. That's what it is.
Okay, that's fine, cause I mean, we had an application last week that was on uh Long Neck Point and the same exact thing came up and they had. A conceptual landscaping plan or landscape plan and, and the big question on that was, I asked, can my si- can my son see the house from the water? With the lights on it and, you know, they gave me an answer. And you, you got the same thing. It's not required, but it's, it's usually encouraged. To keep all um, you know, doubts out of people's minds.
Right.
Um, thank you for doing that though. That's, that's um, that's always helpful, Amy. Uh, so the way I looked at it, there's a, there's a heavy hedge and then inside the heavy hedge is a bunch of um. You know, Christmas trees, that's what I call them on the inside and it's, it's, is that right? Right, I, I got that right?
Yes, it's ornamental plantings. What will be there, I, I, we just haven't made any decisions on yet, but yes, there'll be some ornamental plantings. It'll be pretty heavily landscaped on that edge.
Yeah, I mean, it, the whole thing about the screening, that, that does cut both ways. I don't think the people in the pool want to see the neighbors and I don't think the neighbors want to see the people in the pool.
Pretty much exactly it.
We don't have a, our, argument on that, okay? Um, commissioners, I want to open up this to the public unless you guys, you good Amy for now?
I'm good for now, thanks.
Okay, uh, Chris, I want to open up this in public unless you guys had any questions relative to anything else we just went over. Good, okay. Would anybody in the general public like to speak to this application?
I would. Neighbors Suzanne and Thomas DeBeau. And if I could be at the uh screen, I would like to uh share my screen with you all.
Welcome, Wilder Shore. Can TV seven and I, I think you can take care of that.
Think she'll be good?
So I represent Thomas and Suzanne DeBeau who are at, at the adjacent property. Um, thirteen Searl Road and this is our comments on the application just heard. Um. Let me just. So, um, the issues and concerns is we have bought the west side of the Burke property, Patterson Burke property. The proposed pool is thirty-one feet from the DeBeau property. It's a hundred and twenty-five feet from the Patterson house. Um, our next slide shows that and I'll just, here it is. The Patterson house is here. It's a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty-six feet away from the pool. It's sixty-one feet from our property, from our house. And the DeBeaus master bedroom and a guest bedroom are on this side of the Searls uh of the DeBeau property. The pool is thirty-one feet from our property line, hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty-six feet from the. Uh, Patterson house. It meets setbacks, the pool does, but clearly the uh noisiest activity is going to be right next to us. So that was a concern. Um. So stormwater, we had four concerns when we looked at this. Stormwater drainage and flooding and that frankly has been addressed through the dialogue between our engineer Craig Flaherty. And uh, Mr. Nestor. Um, we're concerned about landscaping. We're concerned about sound and noise. And we're concerned about lighting. And basically, we're asking you to assist us to make sure that the applicant develops the property. In the way that he is represented to us and to you, that he's going to develop it. So, um, we turn to stormwater drainage and flooding and frankly. We just want a stipulation that the proposed development plan revised two twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. Will, uh, the as built will conform to the proposed plans. Uh, we trust Craig Flaherty's review and he's given us comfort that. Um, it does meet the regulations. In terms of engineering and I will say this, that the um, the storm drainage plan is required to be a fresh meadows. Any addition of more than a thousand square feet of impervious surface. Requires a fresh meadow approach. In addition, any planning and zoning, any applicant's application. Which requires approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, requires a fresh meadows approach. So under section eight eighty, what they did is what was required and they did not go beyond it, other than. They provided some extra storage capacity in their flood uh retention. Um, but it's not that they volunteered to do something they weren't required to do. Um, the landscaping, we have been asking since before the prior hearing. Uh, for a copy of the landscape plan. We got this on March. It was dated December twenty-one, the conceptual plan. Which Amy provided and we were advised that there will be a ten to twelve foot high evergreen hedge. Along our common property line. And we asked that you require the applicants, applicants to implement this plan. With a hedge along the DeBeau property line being installed and maintained at a minimum ten feet height. Now, if you're, if they don't want to do ten feet, there should be a minimum height of seven or eight feet. When it's installed. It's more expensive, but that provides immediate screening from our property that will grow over time. Um, and we ask that any modifications to that conceptual plan. Be approved by planning and zoning staff to assure that such changes do not adversely impact our property or other neighbors. Um, cause the conceptual plan actually gives us great comfort based on the fact they told there'd be a uh ten to twelve foot high evergreen hedge. So we're asking for P and C to help us confirm that what they told us would happen will occur. Amy showed you the landscape plan. She's already indicated and this is the area where we're most concerned about preserving the evergreen hedge. Um, I do note that there were a lot, a fair number of trees in this area that are being removed. Cause this is being excavated from an elevation of uh fourteen down to, I think, uh twelve or thirteen. And um. This appears to be mitigation planting. I suspect to sort of give some screening from this portion of the road. Um, so turning to the next concern, sound and noise. Amy's Abitacus advised me in an email that there's no proposed sound system. So if they do put an exterior sound system on, we'd ask that the planning and zoning staff review it. To, and to assure no adverse impact on neighboring uh properties. Um. With respect to lighting, um, on. March third, Amy advised me in an email that the applicants are not proposing any lighting for the pool area beyond typical landscaping and safety lighting. And the pool area was defined by me in an email to her as anything below the contour thirteen, basically the revised flood zone line. Um, that's on the site development plan that they submitted. That would be this new flood zone. Thirteen contour here. Basically, this is the area of our greatest concern in this area. And frankly, we're not that concerned about what they do on the house, but in this area, we want everything to be low. Or if it's up high, we want it shielded, so we can't see the source of any light. And we think that's appropriate and we think that under section one oh oh five, this is a special permit application. Their landfilling and regressing, they must comply with the requirements of special permits. Which is section one thousand five B, which says that you must have. Uh, the applicant must demonstrate that there's no adverse impact on neighbors or impairment of their property values. We don't think it's a big deal to ask them to submit any lighting plan to P and C staff. Uh, in this area to assure that it's not going to have an adverse impact on neighbors. So, um. Uh. And we think that uplighting in the pool area that we just described would be. Something that would adversely affect us, that exterior light sources are shielded from view from neighboring properties. And that e- exterior lighting plans, uh, it should be shown on plans. Which shall be reviewed and approved by staff prior to implementation to assure no adverse impacts on neighboring properties. Um, and that's basically it. It's a, that summarizes, addresses the three things, four things that we had concerns. So stormwater and drainage has already been addressed. The landscaping, the conceptual plan should be implemented and if there's material changes, they should be reviewed. Of most importance is the um, the height of the evergreen hedge along the common property line. Um, if they're going to install it below ten feet, which they said it would be, we, we would want it at a minimum eight feet. Uh, we'd like, uh, there is no sound, exterior sound system proposed, but there is one that's in the pool area. And defined as below elevation thirteen on the revised site plan. We'd like to have that reviewed and blessed by commission staff. And the same with lighting. Um, so that's basically it. We just want to be sure that they develop the property in a manner that they represented they would do so to my clients and me.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, relative to lighting, uplighting. Half of the, half of the houses in town have trees that are uplift. Are you against uplighting trees that are on people's property?
Uh, we would like to keep it minimized in this area. Um, and uh, if you don't agree with us on that as a conceptual thing. Um, we would have to bow to your approach on that. We'd certainly want to cap it to a minimum in the pool area. Um, that's the area we were talking about. Uh, if they feel they want. If they feel they want something in the, you know, that's a request.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I've never seen us really regulate uplighting trees that are in a pool area. I mean, and the, the sound system, you know, I don't know if they're going to make a decision today or tomorrow if they're going to put a sound system, which are those little rocks that are out pools that are wireless. I don't need, I don't need staff to have to go, you know, search it up down if they put rocks in there with, that are, you know, Bluetooth speakers.
Steve, the technology exists to make it so there's absolutely no possibility in the neighbors hear a thing. The middle sex club used to have big speakers that blasted from the clubhouse out to the tennis courts. And eventually those were replaced by many little speakers. I mean, there's no controls here, and maybe you were involved in that.
I was the guy that did it.
The neighbor complained.
I was a neighbor, and I was the president that installed those speakers.
Well, I'm, I'm really glad you did because it, it's just, if, if the applicants are good neighbors, they will do this on their own. But I just, we are concerned about it, and we're trusting that we would much prefer to have P and Z put something in here to make sure that what they've told us are going to do, they do.
And will there be mutuality, Wilder? Does your client have a pool? Will they agree to stipulate to not uplight and to not put a sound system and to not do anything that the neighbors will say? I mean, if it's going to be mutual, right?
Yeah.
Why don't you guys come up with a private agreement? And stiff the things between the two of you and not have the town have to get involved? When what they're doing, it appears to comply with the regs?
I mean, you've done enough pool applications in your day, Wilder.
Oh, I've done pool applications in my day.
Oh, I know you have.
And I've seen, well, I've seen neighbors voluntarily say, I have no problem to do this, this and this. And what we've gotten is no, nothing of, we got a conceptual plan two days ago, and that we got a schematic plan before that, and neither of them seems to be, we just are not comfortable that this is going to be implemented. We'd like to see it implemented. That's all.
Would anybody else like to speak to this application? I don't see anybody. Okay, any questions or comments from any other commissioners on what we're talking about here? We're good. And then, who was it again? Brian, you all square?
Yes, thank you very much.
Hey, Jeremy and Fred, we okay? Amy, I think we're wrapping this thing up.
All right, sounds good. Unless there are any other questions for me?
No, I just want to make sure that we know that the amount of fills coming in and out and the rock chipping and all that stuff, we trust all that stuff. Because those are going to be in the, in the resolution. You're not, you're not applying for the pool permit today, right? That's not part of this application. It's just conceptual pool area.
Well, the, the installation of the pool is part of the application since that's part of the landfilling and regrading, but not, we're not, we haven't applied for any of the building permits yet.
Okay.
That is as shown.
That's where the pool is going.
Yes.
And the check work in the pool and all that stuff.
The terrace, the pool, the house emissions, this is actually.
These planters.
Everything is as designed.
It's the landscaping that's conceptual at this point, Steve.
Got it. Understood, understood. Okay, with that said, I would entertain a motion to close. Jeff Paul makes the motion. Karen makes the second. All of us in favor? We're closed. Well, we're not delivering this thing tonight, Amy, but we'll deliver in a couple of weeks and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you, everybody. All right, that's the end of the public hearing. Now we're going to move into the general meeting. Let me hold up. If you guys give me a half a second, I'll rearrange my papers. I'll put you guys on mute so I get the stuff off, right? Not in your ears. Hold on one second. All right, sorry about that, everybody. George Riley, if you can hear me, you're welcome back, sir. That application is done. Maybe I can ping him, something like that. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is amendment to special permit number fifty-nine G, as in George, site plan number zero three, Ableist at twenty-six East Lane. Request to modify the previous approval relative to conditions I and K related to staff living in the dwellings as well as a P and Z, P and Z department certification. I bet you Nick, we have Bob Mazza on this one or no?
Not I can help cover it. Bob is here. I noted for the record that George Riley's returned to the meeting. You may recall that twenty-six East Lane was a multiple-step process. The first process, part of the aspect was a zone change. And then, first was a site plan, special permit, followed by a zone change to possibly allow a staff member or members to live on site and some changes to the definition of disability and things like that. So although the zoning change did allow such, the applicant has never returned with a modification of the original special permit specifically changed the commission's approval relative to that zone change. So what Bob Maslin has done is submitted a letter dated March second, twenty twenty-two, noting the two conditions within the commission's November twenty-seven, twenty eighteen approval that would need to be changed to allow a staff member to live on site and to change the certification, I believe, for, and change to the disability. Does that seem logical to you, Bob? Is that a good summary of what we discussed in terms of our timeline? In terms of sequencing and why you're here tonight?
Yes. For the record, Robert Maslin, and representing Ableist now, who actually owns the property. When we did this, the last text amendment, the purpose of it was to allow people with developmental disabilities as defined in federal law to occupy the property and to allow one staff person in each building to live in the building, provided that they met the income qualifications. And when we went through that whole process, the whole discussion focused on the East Lane project. The only thing that wasn't done was to go back and make these technical changes to the special permit as it was originally written. And so the one change is a change in the reference to the statutory definition from the state statute on intellectual disability, which is section one dash one G of the statutes, and change it to forty-two USC, section fifteen zero zero two subsection eight, which is the definition of developmental disability. And also to put in the staff person. If you're wondering why the change or what the change in the definition does is it changes the qualification or the definition of a disabled person from a person who has an intelligence quota less than seventy, which is the state standard. And the problem with that is if somebody has an IQ of seventy-one, they can't live there. But there's no practical difference in the level of disability in, in most cases. The federal definition is not based on IQ, rather it's based on a list of everyday living of factors. And it's a, it's a broader definition, but it doesn't change the, the limitation that this housing is for people with disabilities. So that is.
Hey, Bob, I don't mean to, Bob, can I interrupt one second?
Sure.
We know what we did back in, in November. So I don't know if we have to go through this whole thing all over again. We just got to change the resolution.
Yeah, then, okay, and then.
You already did it, right?
Already did it. You're, all you're doing is, you know, putting it into the special permit that way.
Correct, yeah, so it's.
That's all, that's all you're doing.
That's fine. Yeah, we don't need to get deep into the weeds and all this stuff because we already did it. All right, so if you go to Mr. Mazza or Attorney Mazza's letter from March twenty-third on page two, it goes, it goes over the two items we're talking about, which is I, when I say March twenty-third, right? Which is what? It's today, isn't it?
Last week.
Last week.
Oh, that's a typo. It's actually March.
Wait a second. I'm like, wait a second. You're ahead of your, you're ahead of your time, man.
Maybe I should, I don't know. I'm starting to slip here.
Page one's March second, page two is March twenty-third. Anyway, at the end of the day, it says, in, in, out of my, all dwellings shall be allowed to be occupied by persons who, instead of that, are deemed to be development to disabled, which will change an intellectual developmental, which we already talked about, as defined by, instead of the state statute, we took that out and put it to United States code. And also the second says, one unit in each building may be occupied by a staff person employed by a nonprofit ministry that provides such separate meets income requirement, which is what Mr. Mathen said and which we approved back in December of last year. That's the first item. Then the second item is K isn't, isn't, as in Karen, honor before jet thirty, the thirty-first of each kind of year, the property commissioner certified the playing zoning department, the human resources at all occupants that meet the requirements of section four fifty-four. And we went over that. It knows you. So it's just a housekeeping cleanup. I appreciate Mr. Mazza and Attorney Mazza giving us the overview, but we all kind of sort of know what we did back in December. Do any commissioner, any questions on this item? We're good. All right, so Bob, I just saved you some money by, by saving your breath. The straw poll, right?
Take, take a motion and vote on amending the prior special.
Fantastic. Can I get a motion to approve this change to the, Karen makes a motion. Look for a second. George, Jeff Paul makes the second, Adam makes the third. All of them in favor? Fantastic. Five, nothing. You're welcome. Okay. Next on the agenda, outdoor dining. And outdoor dining activities, request to reestablish outdoor dining and activities in twenty twenty-two for various locations, including but not limited to Bodega and the Goose. We have an item in our packet that is from nine eighty Boston Post Road, which is, that is Bodega, right?
Right, David Genepes came to us and said, what do I need to do to reestablish the dining area behind Bodega and the Goose? That area specifically is on to property in the center street south. So that needs approval by the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Selectmen will not act until cleaning and zoning says it's okay. So the question for the commission here is twofold. One is your willingness to allow this again this year with presumably the same setup as they had last year in terms of location, furniture, baller, and all that good stuff. But the next question really goes towards, obviously, the past two years, we've had numerous restaurants and other facilities in town like gyms authorized for outdoor dining and outdoor activity. As today was not a bad day, tomorrow it's going to likely snow, but eventually the weather will turn good again. And then many applicants will come to us with requests for outdoor dining and activity. So my question tonight is not only about the goose and bodega, but other entities and how the commission wishes to treat those with the expectation that we will start seeing a steady stream of requests from folks who have had allowances for such in the past year or two, how the commission wishes to treat those going forward, whether to grant them again for twenty twenty-two and take it year by year. So I guess we can start with the first question first.
Let, let me give a little bit of overview in my view. We did do a permanent approval for ten twenty. Ten twenty had a temporary approval. And then they upped their game and put in their beautiful new outdoor patio in the rear and also on the side of the driveway. There are some other restaurants that may have ideas of doing that and other ones that may be temporary, like this one in particular, Bodega and the Goose has always got a lot of being temporary because it's not their property.
This would be, this one specifically is not on their property. So the town is going to work with them on whatever license agreement, whether the town charges them rent. It's not our business. That's Board of Selectmen's business. I don't know. But they, good for them for starting the process early on so they can track down the furniture, get it all set up. So presumably when the weather turns good in May, they'll be ready to go.
Right. Nationally, and I always look at the, the world in, in a global perspective. New York City is trying to make all these temporary ones permanent and change the rules. I just went out to Palo Alto and Santa Clara in San Jose, California. Los, Palo Alto has got a lot of these things that are, you know, they look as they're temporary, and they are temporary where they took up, you know, parking spaces and they moved it and they put in wood in the parking space and there's tables. The restaurants really like them. But from, from an architectural perspective, Palo Alto's main street, which is the highest rent street in the entire town, kind of looks, it kind of looks shoddy. You know, Greenwich did the same thing. Westport did the same thing, and New Canaan did the same thing. So all those temporary ones are gone. What, what my suggestion is, if someone's going to go permanent, like ten twenty did, they're going to have to go to ARB. We know that for a fact. And even these temporary ones have to go to ARB. And if they're going to go permanent, you know, and they're going to do a ten twenty type-ish thing, then they should come to us. You know, we don't want, you know, for, for example, like, what's the one up there on the, what's the, Rory's? We don't want Rory's to have those, those outdoor Jersey barriers for the rest of their life. If they want to go permanent, you know, I think they, they eventually have to come in.
Different scenario.
Correct. It's a different scenario. And partly the reason why we also did this because we were in the pandemic and the governor approved it. We're in the pandemic. Nobody was going anywhere and parking wasn't an issue. You know, Rory starts taking away their parking and who's the guy next to them? The, the new Italian joint? They know, they did the same thing. Those are all temporary. So, I mean, in, in my, in my belief, the restaurants really want it, right? At the end of the day, I think we can maybe this year do staff approval for these temporary ones. But if they're going to go up their game, then we got to see everything. And ARB, us was also signed up in this. I don't know how long these outdoor special, temporary permits are going for the State of Liquor Authority. Because we had three triggers last time. We had P and Z, we had the Health Department, we had the State Liquor Authority, and we also had the Building Department. You know, because sort of a lot of these things, one, you have to be six feet apart and only five people a table. Two, the tables couldn't be close. And when they get heated, you know, we don't want these tents blowing away. That's when the building department came in. So that's.
Rules are no longer valid, right? So I guess that's the question for the commission is, did you want to authorize specifically Goose and Bodega and anything else? They've got a prior temporary approval for one more year and staff just to work with these people for twenty twenty-two. And as Steve said, one option would be to them, in certain circumstances, they might be able to get a permanent approval if they can fit it on their site safely.
Right.
They need P and Z and ARB.
They need P and Z and ARB. So that's why the, the letter that we got, the application we got is dated, is dated last year, right? This is March first from last.
For those who were around last year, or to refresh your memory, I was David DeReese, minute.
Right. So that's kind of, so we are relative to these two guys, the Goose and, and Bodega. I, I think they loved it last year and the town gave it to them. So the town's going to give it to them. The Board of Selectmen is going to give it to them first. And then ARB looked at it and signed off on both of them. And like I said, if something's going to up their game, we all know they have to come up to us anyway. But I want to open up to the floor and, and the people, and eventually have to vote on it and give Mr. Genepes and these two guys questions. So, George Riley, your light is on. You want to go first, sir?
Well, I, I was just caught by your, really global statement about Rory's and how that wouldn't go, that wouldn't fly as a permanent.
really global statement about Rory's and how that wouldn't go, that wouldn't fly as a permanent item. And I think they ought to present a, an application if they want to do that. I wouldn't prejudge that. And, you know, any of them who want temporary, I'm all for it.
Okay, but you want staff to approve them or the way we did it last year? Or do you want to see all these things?
Doing the same as last year, that's fine.
Great. I'm with you there. Adam, you want to go next? Any comments? Were you around? You were, dude, you weren't really around for this last year when we did all this stuff.
No, I'm happy. I think what you said is pretty much in line. I think if they want to make it permanent, obviously, they should come before us. But if they just want to do a one-year extension, I don't see any issue with staff handling it. But we should maybe have some sunset, so it's not just every year over and over again.
Right, yeah. I mean, we're, right now, we're doing one year at a time. We actually, the first go around, I think we did it till like.
Six months or something.
We did less than that. I think we did July first. We actually did July first. I got a vote. We moved to Memorial Day, then I got extended again. Jeff Ball, what do you think, sir?
So you're saying that it's just the goose and ten twenty, and then anyone that's new has to come with an application or or a request?
Like Rory's might come back.
We were all approved in previous years. So I I kept the list of those people. And what we would do is basically send a letter to those people with basically saying, hey, the commission on March eighth authorized you to put out exactly what you had last year. And you're allowed to do it till Thanksgiving of twenty twenty two. And there's no guarantee you'll get it in the future. And if you want a permanent solution, put together a plan, we'll run it by P and Z and ARB, and we can look into permanent outdoor dining. But we will hereby, the commission has hereby authorized you for basically one more year.
And a part, a part of that, just to make sure we're clear, is they also have to get the liquor permit for outside, which is out of our control. And they also have to get the building department sign off. And I don't know where the Health Department falls in. Now, we had that blast go around. But you can't put, you can't put up a tent in your parking lot without the building department saying yes to it. Because like, you guys, you two guys were in here last year. If a storm comes flying through and this thing's not hunkered down the tents, you know, it's just, it's an umbrella and it takes off. You know, that's why the building department got involved. Karen Gately, anything to add, miss?
Um, no, I think Jeremy addressed my issue, which was, I know, I think there's sort of a parity issue if we're just, you know, extending for an additional year to restaurants, but I I I feel much more comfortable. Jeremy said, you know, we, with the list of already existing, that they would, you know, we would proactively reach out and say, you know, you've been provisional, you know, if you want it extended, you know, approval for an additional year, right? I think businesses have had a hard time. If they want it, we should not stand in the way and we should, you know, allow them to get back on, you know, sturdy, stable ground, I think, right? They provide a real vibrancy and a, you know, they're a great asset to the town. So I'm more comfortable with this if we're providing parity to other, to other restaurants, so we're not creating, you know, a disadvantage and advantaging one group of restaurants over the others. So I think Jeremy, with your solution, I think that's really fabulous. So I'm in favor of this. And then I think ongoing, we'll have to decide, right? Do we change our regs to keep this permanent? And I kind of say, yeah, but I guess that's something for us to consider. If we want to, you know, revise our regs so that, you know, you don't have to keep doing this provisionally.
Well, I think you mentioned a good, a good point, Carol, which I neglected to mention is, there was a state statute, some legislation that passed relative to this, which I'm going to read through, which gives restaurants a little more flexibility. And so we'll be taking a look at that. And whether we have to change our regs to account for that new statute, I'll take a look, but I'll make sure. And if we, if there is something that's relative or relevant, I'll get it to the commission.
Thank you.
So the way the notes were written says, after nine four, various locations, including but not limited to Bodega and the Goose. So the the ones that are on my hot list are like Rory's, Giovanni's, or Giovanni's too, whatever, whatever it is, you know, Nino's next door to them, that kind of stuff. What what I don't really want to see in the future is if you guys ever go up to where where Costco is, across the street, that Italian restaurant, and they have that tent city. You know, even my son looked at it. He goes, wow, that, that looks terrible. You know, I don't think we want that forever. Okay, so we'll make a quick motion. Everybody, look for a motion to approve what Jeremy put on number five as amended to approve these, these for twenty twenty two in various occasions, including but not limited to Bodega and the Goose. So I make that motion. Adam makes the motion, looking for a second. Karen makes the second. All's in favor? Good luck restaurants and other good lucky outdoor stuff. Thank you for your attention to our town. Next item, amendment to coastal site plan review number three fifty two, landfilling or grading application number four ninety. Kling at two, three, seven Long Neck Point Road, R one. R one zone proposal, proposed amendments to the previously approved plan, including but not limited to rotating the chimney, new street cut, stone piers by change of the grade, and change of the grade by the pool. We have a narrative in our, in our packets from Mr. Doug Van Horn to us. You want to go to this, Jeremy?
Sure, I'll go over this. You may recall, the commission members, coastal site plan review three fifty two and land grading, landfilling and grading. Planning and zoning commission, they're out there in the process of constructing the house and the other improvements. You see the February twenty eight, twenty twenty two amendment, number one memo from Doug Vanderhorne of Vanderhorne Architects. Colin and the property owner. There are four very minor, this is being busted. Into the chimney, the new street cut and driveway, two stone pier pillars, trees, and then a change near the pool. Again, when the commission looked at this relative to the issues of coastal site plan review and landfilling, when you look at these changes, these do not impact the coastal site plan or the regrading of the property. I went through the changes with Colin. They're all very minor changes. These are, you know, for this size project, these types of changes are typical, I feel, when you're out working and moving things slightly. The house and the pool still meet all the regs and requirements, and these changes are consistent with the commission's prior approval. He's giving you enough background information here. Industry engineer looked at it, the arborist looked at it, so I'm comfortable recommending all these changes to the mission.
Sounds good. Mr. Vanderhorne's here. Doug, you want to scrub your cup and quick changes for us, you mind?
Can you hear me?
Can hear you, sir.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I think Jeremy summarized it well. I don't think there's anything especially here that needs a special attention, but let's see, rotating the chimney is very minor. We moved the house, you may recall, we moved this house seven feet away from the tree, which allowed us to get this chimney further away from the tree, so now we can rotate it. The street cut is nothing out of the ordinary. This street, many of the homes on the street have two street cuts. This will allow the delivery truck to not have to back out, which was one of the big issues. Like many families right now, they get a lot of deliveries. The replacement of the trees along the street, most of these trees are in terrible shape. One is in the location of the proposed central driveway. They're talking about putting substantial sized trees here, five to six inch caliper. And they'll all be excellent quality, as you can imagine. And then this drop in grade is simply to, it's like a, an eighteen inch drop, I think, or maybe two feet just at one little area adjacent to the pool to allow the disappearing edge to look a little bit better. It remains green area as it was previously. Very simple. I don't have much more to add.
That's great. Thanks, Doug. So with regards to the chimney, it used to be cut, it used to be, I don't know, forty five degree, now it's straight. That's the outdoor chimney. We're talking about not the one that's part of the house. The street cut opening thing, that's DPW, so that's really somebody else's issue. But it's a change in the site plan. The trees, if a tree's dead, and your arborist said, dead, it's got to come down, it's got to come down. And I think a disappearing edge or an infinity pole are kind of cool. So they're getting a kind of a cool pole. Good for them. Any other questions for any commissioners on this application or this general meeting item? I see no, look at that. And Doug's an architect in town, lives in town, does a lot of houses in town. It has a big focus on Long Neck Point. With that said, I would answer a motion to approve this request as submitted. Karen makes a motion, looking for a second. George Riley makes a second. All's in favor? There you go. Doug and Miss Kling, you got your three approvals you need. Good luck with your new house.
Thank you.
Moving on, okay. Next item, flood diversion application number four twenty four, Stephen and Jody Sorals at seventeen Rainbow Circle. Proposal to construct a sixty seven plus five square foot addition to the north side of the existing family residence within a flood zone. The point five seven plus major subject property is located on the terrace of Rainbow Circle, approximately three hundred and fifty feet north of its intersection with Token East Road. It showed a Sessors map number thirty seven as lot number eighteen D in the R one zone. I, it's why we have to see this?
That is out today, though. The builder came to us. And he said, you know, we just need a survey. It's a very small. And then we realized that part of the property is in the flood zone and part of it is within So we're bringing it to the commission as a general meeting item, because the minor amount of work that's in the flood zone is very minimal. Again, we're talking sixty square feet, so.
It's not even sixty, it's half of that.
Very small. But it is in the flood zone, so we needed the commission's approval on this. We'll make sure we get all the engineering and home certifications done on it. But we didn't want to run it by the commission. It is very mild.
Yeah, I mean, I, when I first looked at this, I thought they might need a variance, but then I looked at, there's no variance needed. It's the the family's redoing their kitchen and their pump, pump, the moving, I think the refrigerator over and they're moving the stairs over. I don't know if you guys looked at the application, it's pretty simple. It's, it's, we're talking sixty five feet. Any questions or comments on this one? I'm getting, no, okay. Looking for a motion to approve as submitted. Jeff Ball makes a motion with his, what do you have? Your witness protection lighting on? I'm looking for a second. There you go. Adam makes the second. All's in favor? I didn't, five, nothing. I didn't know Jeff Ball was in the witness protection program. All right. Next item on the agenda, deliberations only on the filings if the hearing is closed on March eighth, twenty twenty two. My proposal is to punt these. It is now ten fifteen. I don't know if we have the time to go over the Token East Road, the Brookside House, and the Seals Road one. Those are pretty big projects, and I don't want to rush them. So anyone have any problems if we punt this to another meeting? Staff's okay with this? Fantastic. All right. Well, it's just got punted, rather twenty seven. The next item we have on the agenda is minutes from January eleventh, our meeting last time. I think everybody was there. And we were here. Any questions, comments, scrivners errors on the minutes? The thing we had, the first item on here was the Ox Ridge solar panels that we approved. The DCA having their parties in the front lawn that we approved. We had some deliberations again on parklands. On the two items, remember that application was two different things. One was the zoning approval or the change in the zoning. And then the other one, which is the site plan. And the last item on here is the, we had the first meeting relative to the state affordable housing plan, and that's all the minutes on that on here. And then again, we have the resolution, which we can't change anyway, on the thing at Half Mile Road. Questions, comments, scrivners errors, changes, typos, anything like that? I'm getting everyone's cool. I didn't pick up anything because we've got pretty people doing our stuff now. With that said or not said, looking for most to approve the minutes as submitted. There you go. Adam makes a motion. George Riley makes a yawning second. All's in favor? Five, nothing. That's done. All right, fantastic. We'll move right along. Amendments move out of written. Let's see if I can try to get out here next. The chairman's report, I don't really have too much to add to the chairman's report. I mean, tomorrow morning, I've got an OPC meeting, so if anybody has anything that want me to bring up an OPC, I'll do it again with that. I think the biggest change between our last, our last chairman's meeting in the New Land, most in this meeting would be with regards to with regard to the Corbin District, if you go by there, on the, I want to call it the east side of of Corbin Lane. It's really going to put the three buildings, which is the first one that's up and it's called the Tibbetts Building. That one's closer to old King's Highway South. That's out there, right? That building is up, peaked out, topped off. It's not enclosed yet. It doesn't have any roofs on. The building in the middle, I don't know what that one's called, and the building on the end, we effectively called the, well, actually, Mill Lane Mill is what we effectively call the Compass Building, because Compass on the ground floor, and the other one's going to be the Bank of America building. That building, the one that's up now, the Tibbetts Building, is to be completed in October of this year. And the other buildings will be completed probably after the new year. In in commercial real estate and retail real estate, if you can't get some done, something done by October, there's basically a dark period where retailers, if they're going to move from one side to the other, they don't do it, if they don't do it prior to October, prior to Halloween, then they don't do it until February first. So they get to the holiday season, make all that stuff, because a lot of these people are moving from the left side of the street to the right side of the street. The item that's important about this is in those three buildings, there's going to be thirty eight total apartment units. Do you know which ones Tibbetts and which one of these three, which ones, which ones, Bank of America? It was, we think, is K. So there's only four apartments in this one? And you're thinking Bank of America, there's going to be twenty four? Or is the other way around? Okay. The thing that's important is, is with regards to federal. The federal building, their first building, is is due to be finished on September first. That building's going to have about eighty apartment units in it. And I want to make sure the Board of Education knows that they have a building coming online with eighty apartment units in it. Whether there's students there or not, we don't know at this point. This building that we're talking about, Tibbetts, is going to have somewhere between four and twenty four apartment units. I think it's only, I think it's only four. I think, I think now it's in the middle, it might be ten. I don't know. It's got apartment units. That building's going to be online in October. And we ought to make sure the Board of Education, people like that, people are concerned with regards that are in the loop. That's why I want to make sure we keep talking about this stuff, so there's no surprises. What else? There's a couple new, there's a couple new tenants that were announced recently for for the Corbin District. There's an Italian market. There's a hair salon that's come from Greenwich. And they they got a sushi sushi place that's going to go into the Corbin District. There were also a couple new tenants that were announced over at Federal. In addition to what was there, I think the other one was added was a Italian restaurant, but I think I said that last time. I said that last time. And Jeremy's still going over items with them or people that may, may not come. We might see some more stuff from them uses that are going to go in there. I think really that's it for me. I spoke about everything else. Do you have anything to add? There's no director's report. And we're getting close to three hours. Any other business requires a three, two thirds majority of the commission to vote? Well, the only other thing we're going to talk about is the, is the next minute is going to be live and in person.
We're aiming for April fifth.
Okay. The, the, we have to, we're supposed to go back to be live and in person in in town hall here. The issue that we have is that we have to notice meetings two weeks in advance, so we can't pivot as fast as Board of Education or Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen. So we already noticed the twenty second meeting, which is two weeks out, so we can't have that one live and in person, as we couldn't have this one live in person, but we can notice. So we can't have that one, um, live and in person, as we couldn't have this one live and in person, but we can notice April fifth to be live and in person back in town hall. All the other commissions and boards went back to town hall. So hopefully I get to see everybody here on April fifth. Um, that meeting will be noticed on town hall. Um, and anyone that has, the general public has got to come into our office too. We're not doing, we're doing TV seventy-nine, we're not doing any Zoom or any GoToMedia.
A normal life.
Okay. So we're going to see Bob Masson again for the first time in two years, I'm sure. Um, all right. That's it. Um, updating me, we just talked about that, March twenty-second and April fifth. With that said, um, I would, hesitation and motion to close unless anybody else has anything to add. We got a motion by Jeff Ball on the floor, looking for a second. I had a second by Adam. Any discussion? No discussion?
Beautiful.
All's in favor? Motion to close? Thank you, folks. Meeting's over. Appreciate TV seventy-nine. We're all set. Say goodbye, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Good night, all.